Well, good morning. I will now call to order the May 19th, 2025 special meeting for Commissioner Position Four, appointed interviews. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please roll call for us?
Yes, Chair Roberts, thank you. Good morning. First, our staff support today, County Council, Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board, Andrew Jirocky. Roll call, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Roberts.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here today. I'm excited that we are so close to appointing a new Commissioner to be a part of the Board. I would like to thank all the 59 applicants for their willingness to put themselves out there and for their desire to serve the people of Clackamas County. Being a Commissioner requires a lot of commitment, hard work, and is also very rewarding. Thank you for your interest in this opportunity. At this time, I'd like to welcome our top five candidates that are here this morning. I will say their names in alphabetical order. Good morning, Happy Valley Mayor Tom Ellis, former Lake us Wigo City Councilor Jeff Goodman, former mayor of Damascus, Diane Helm, Metro Councilor Christine Lewis, and lastly, former city councilor of Lake us Wigo, Jackie Mans. Now, I will ask our county administrator Gary Schmidt to walk us through the process for today's interview. Gary?
Thank you, Chair Roberts. Today, Commissioners, you will be interviewing the top candidates you just named. The day will look as follows. The order of the interviews will be selected at random very shortly here by the clerk by having the candidates pull a number out of the basket that Clerk Andrew is going to hold in the air right now, right there. Candidates number one, well, the first candidate will stay in their room for their interview. Candidates two through five will be escorted out of this hearing room and will be sequestered in the conference room in the Board of County Commissioners' office. And I'm sorry, we're going to take away your cell phones or other electronic devices during that time. Each interview will last no more than 40 minutes. Right in front of me is the 40-minute stopwatch for the Commissioners to see. Each interview will contain the first, each interview will contain the same two questions to start, which I will ask on behalf of the Board, then followed by questions from each of the Commissioners. Commissioners will ask questions in the following order: Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Schrader, Commissioner West, and Chair Roberts. Time permitting, Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask a second question, round two, after the first round. Each answer by the candidates will be allotted no more than three minutes, and we'll use the standard stopwatch that is on the wall and also on the testimony table for the candidates. When three minutes is up, you will hear a beep, and I will say, please, stop. After, that's the beep right there, thank you. After each interview, the candidate that has been interviewed is welcome to stay in the room and observe, or is free to leave. Once all five interviews are concluded, the Board will take a very short meal break and then will return to deliberate. The Board hopefully will make a decision today or set a decision for a later date. This meeting must conclude no later than 2:00 p.m. today due to Board travel. All right, so with that, we're ready to draw for order. Clerk Andrew, would you please bring the basket to the candidates, and we'll draw for order and then announce it out loud, and I'll write it down. Go ahead, Andrew. Candidate, so I could please have you meet me right here in the middle of the room, and we'll draw for order. Thank you. All right, who is, who has number one, please? Christine Lewis, okay. And number two, please?
Jackie Mans.
Jackie Mans, okay. Please wait till I call on you. Number three, please, Jeff Goodman. Number four, please, Diana Helm.
Helm.
And number five, then, is Tom Ellis. All right, so once more, the order today for interviews: one, Christine Lewis; two, Jackie Mans; three, Jeff Goodman; four, Diana Helm; five, Tom Ellis. I will now ask candidates two through five to please. Caroline, we'll escort you out of the room to the holding room. And then Chair, we're ready to start here as soon as those candidates are up.
Commissioner Schrader had a quick question.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to state something. I don't know if the, I would be great if the other folks could just, as we get started, I just wanted to remind people about the history of how we came to a five commission, and that was back when it was, it was Commissioner Peterson who pushed that forward. And one of the things that I've been getting is a lot of issues about partisanship. And I want to remind people that back in the day, the person who chaired that five-member commission was Vern Duncan, who was a well-thought-of and well-loved and still beloved Republican here in the county with a group of other community members who were, again, and it was very clear with that group that this was going to be nonpartisan. So I just want to let people know that my final decision is not going to be based on party, because I believe in the spirit of nonpartisanship. I am a registered Democrat. I love my Democrat friends. They've gotten annoyed with me upon occasion, but I just feel very strongly that we started out on this journey of five in a nonpartisan manner, and I think it needs to, that, that value and the spirit of that needs to be maintained. So, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Well, good morning, Christine. Let's begin the interview with Gary. So Gary, why don't you go ahead and kick it off with the first question for us?
Thank you, Chair, and the timing starts now. This, first two questions are on, the Board of Commissioners decided these questions. Question one: How would you advocate for the needs of both rural and urban residents, especially considering the unique challenges facing unincorporated areas?
Thank you so much for the question. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. When I hear this question, the first word that sticks out to me is advocate, and that, in a nutshell, is who I am. I have made a career out of being an advocate, out of being a public official who doesn't view my job as just representing the government to the people, but in fact, I have flipped that, and I have represented the people of Clackamas County to the Government Agency of Metro on which I serve. So when I think of the job of being an advocate for both the rural, the urban, and frankly, the unincorporated and the urban-rural interface, first and foremost to me, that's continuing the work I've done. It's deeply listening. It's being in community. It is spreading every community event and opportunity to engage to not only myself, but to my peers. It's making sure that I have people that I can trust in every neighborhood and in every community. When I think about the challenges of unincorporated in particular, Commissioner Savis and I have sat side by side as we've been working on some of the transportation issues, but it goes beyond just transportation, thinking through the urban infrastructure that's necessary for them to be a complete community, making sure that we do have housing options, transportation options, that extends to water, that extends to parks. So really taking seriously the job of looking at the things that unincorporated needs. So when I think about advocating for them, it's listening and amplifying the voice of those communities. The urban-rural interface is particularly challenging because you don't want to see that character change on either side, but you're having things butt up against each other. And some of that is people, some of it is wildlife, and some of it is stark lines where you see infrastructure just peter off. So making sure that we have a plan, that we can address it, using a metro word to be really planful, and to not bite off more than we can chew. Really say, where is the place that we want to focus on right now? Have a community involvement process that is inclusive, where people can find belonging in their ideas, and then also understand the process that at some point, a decision has to be made. There are a lot of things in Clackamas County that we've defined the problem, and we hold that defined problem as part of the solution, but in fact, that's just setting the stage for picking a solution.
Great.
Thank you.
Question two: Tell us about when you had to compromise within a team to move a project forward. What did you learn from that experience?
That's a great question. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about working in a team. There are very few things in this world we get done alone. I learned that early on through my upbringing. I learned that through playing sports. I learned that through politics. And I learned that in my early career, where I was working with teams, small teams, 10 and 15, but also larger teams in order to accomplish a goal. But here we are, looking at the necessity of working within teams to find compromise, because so often, in where we are with politics right now, politics are two teams, and they're teams that elicit anger and frustration and exhaustion. And I want to push past that. And I think that looking at what I've done at Metro, I have pushed past that. You, you wouldn't see a partisanship in my work at Metro Council. So thinking through a compromise, I want to really highlight what we did with the last land use decision. We looked at how we can be creative. We looked at what the actual housing need is, and we looked at the readiness of River Terrace 2.0. And at Council, we said, we are going to come up with a way to get River Terrace 2.0 on the track, because it is ready to get built. It's thousands of homes that we cannot wait another three years. The plans are there. The underpinning of the land use system is process. Goal, goal one is community input. So it was not a unanimous vote. We actually had councilors who, who were opposed at the end, but I listened, and we definitely had hard conversations, but I was always clear where I want to get to yes on housing. But I also said, look, I hear your concern. Let's have an extra meeting, or let's get more input or more information on those concerns that you're bringing forward. So at the end of the day, we had a good decision that everybody knows where they stood. Not everybody agreed with every piece of data that was used, but we had an inclusive process. We made a decision, and we didn't just kick the ball down the field. And we got more housing.
Great, thank you. And now we'll transition to each of the Commissioners asking a question, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Savis.
Great, thank you, Chair. Do you support congestion pricing and why?
I do not support the thing that has been called congestion pricing by ODOT. I've been very opposed to the ODOT 205 tolling process. In the larger scheme, there are four or five different scenarios that could be called congestion pricing, even including paid parking. So if we want to move all the way back, there are congestion pricing schemes like paid parking that I could support. But at the end of the day, people vote with their feet. If you're going to put a toll or a price on one road and not the other, we're going to see diversion. And if we see diversion, it's going to be off of the main thoroughfares and into communities, into neighborhoods, and on the neighborhood streets like mine. So we need to actually think through what we're looking at when we think about user pay. User pay makes sense. That's what we have with the gas tax, and I'd be supportive of moving to a VMT. I think at the most fundamental level, though, congestion pricing is about not only looking at that user pay, but also doing something to alter human behavior. It's sending signals through the market, time of day, or kind of trip. And I think we have to be really careful with that, because that unplanned-for or unmitigated congestion will happen if there are no better alternatives, and our community is not prepared to offer those better alternatives.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Hi, good morning, Christine. It's delightful to see you as always. I want to go back to the urban-rural piece a little bit. And this is kind of a tough question, but I feel like I have to bring it forward. You know, with a recent Metro meeting, basically, it became clear that half of our county is not considered to be part of the Metro region. In other words, it stops at the urban growth boundary. And our dilemma, as Commissioners, is, as you pointed out, is to represent the entire county. And how are you going to manage that with, again, a regional entity that seems to think that half of our county is not in the region, particularly because we're, we're actually quite a large food shed? So could you just elaborate a little bit? Because that's, that's a real sticking point with me, because I've had my world in both urban and rural environments. So how are you going to manage that?
Yeah, since you're reading the question, in the Metro Council meeting, I don't know which one you're speaking of. I will just-
It was, it was the SHS meeting, when I said, please tell me and clarify, does, where, where is, what is considered part of the region? And it, and it became very clear there was an answer. It is on the record that half of our county is not considered part of the region. And I, I was very taken aback by that. And, and I, I just want to make sure that, again, anyone that comes into this has to be able to, to represent an entire, this entire 425,000.
Yeah, and I respect that. I also just want to really stick up for the taxpayers in the Metro boundary. Taxpayers in the Metro boundary are those that are paying the SHS tax. So in order to get the services of SHS, that program is really a layer of additional services for the people who live within that boundary. Then, at the end of the day, I think I have been quite the advocate for Clackamas County as a whole and for the rural area in saying that, look, with the SHS program overlaying over the half of the population that lives in Clackamas County, you can actually look at your ongoing county funds, not your Metro funds, and move them almost exclusively-
You were champion-
-to the rural area. So I, I went up against my colleagues, and in fact, some of the advocates for that measure are in saying it is okay to displace existing funds and move, move them so that you have ample resources from your, your investment in Clackamas County. So I, I, I'm concerned that there are multiple views of how SHS should work, but at the end of the day, there are taxpayers in a district, and they like to receive those services.
Just a quick follow-up, because my concern is, at least, I will look into-
Commissioner Schrader, I just want to make sure, because her three minutes, I want to make sure she gets her answer to the question.
Oh, okay, then I am done. I'm done. No, it's okay. No worries. No worries.
That's okay.
Okay. Did you want to add anything else to it?
No, okay.
Okay, just want to make sure you're getting your full time there.
Appreciate that, Chair.
All right. Well, now transition to Commissioner West.
Counselor, thank you for your application being before us today. My question, I hope we could, I'm curious about time. I can get a time check really quick. Oh, my mic's not on. I'm getting the flash. Okay. Thank you. Is that, it says 28 seconds. I know we've been going longer than whatever that says.
That's minutes, minutes. You have 28 minutes left.
Oh, that's minutes, okay. I'm tracking. Okay, thank you. We've seen reports about our population slowing or even declining, not just in Oregon, but specifically in the Portland metro area. And it's growth versus no growth or decline is not just, our decline is not just a demographic destiny. It's also a policy choice. We need more in migration to grow our local economies and families to prosper. So what county policies would you support to create a better economic environment for jobs and prosperity?
Well, that's a really broad question. I think almost everything that the county does is tied to growth and prosperity. Bev Stein used to say that county-level work was the needy and the naughty, and I think over the past two decades, we've totally flipped that on its head, and that the county services are what undergirds growth, development, business, community, education, and health. So we would definitely have to continue the work that you've championed on behavioral health and housing being integrated and readily available in every corner of the community. In terms of the model that's being used, the recovery housing, I think that's spot on, and I would want to champion what we did at Clackamas Village. That needs to happen two or three times over, and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and do that right away. So health and housing, behavioral, behavioral health. In terms of growth, we have to unleash the thousand-plus acres that is ready for industrial by getting Sunrise Corridor. Sunrise Corridor is ripe and ready. We've got a plan. The community has gone through the visioning process. I've been really happy to be part of that with Commissioner Savis. Let's just do it. In order to do it, we need money. We need money from Metro. We need money from a competitive process at ODOT. We need money from the state legislature. We might be able to draw down federal funds. I'm ready to just go in and get money so that we know how to unleash thousand-plus acres of industrial. And then frankly, at the end of the day, it's continuing to build community at the scale that we know how to do. We're seeing it in the Pleasant Valley Expansion Plan, and frankly, we've been seeing it in nooks and crannies in Oregon City, in West Lynn, continue to build housing and continue to build the housing where there's already good schools, there's already main streets that are vibrant, where there's already all of the things that people move to Clackamas County for, which is the neighborhood feel. They're not necessarily needing the big city, but they want to be close to the big city. They want to be close to the arts. They want to be close to the sports. They also want to be close to nature. We offer it all.
Thank you. Do I have time for a quick follow-up on that question? No? Okay.
All right. And, and now you get me as the last question here for today. So this is really around economic development, and Clackamas County prioritizes, prioritizes business expansion, retention, and attraction. And recently, there was a report that came out that businesses are leaving Oregon. So my question is, what proactive strategies would you implement to recruit businesses to Clackamas County?
In order to recruit businesses to Clackamas County, we have to continue to show them that we're a great place to live, but we also have to be willing to work with them. I've got a really strong track record of having worked with the business community. Not only do I sit on the Board of Clackamas County Business Alliance, but I show up for our business community, both WEA and Portland Metro Chamber, my own local chamber in West Lynn. I do what I can to say, look, it is valuable to have business-to-business conversation and business-to-government conversation. And one of the things I've learned the most is that our tax structure stresses business owners out. I'm married to a small business owner, and I can really understand firsthand what it's like looking at the tax structure in the state. We're not going to change the entire tax structure of the state, but one thing that I have been working on that I can change is the SHS business tax, the SHS personal income tax. And it's not actually the business tax that I want to change, it's the personal income tax. 1% is very high. It helps create this downward spiral, if you will. So looking for ways that we could lightly reduce that tax while also extending it over more years. I think, one, you're looking at tax relief, and, two, you're looking at solidifying or cementing a program in place for longer than it's currently going to exist. I've had great conversations with business leaders. The other thing is, I've been able to work with Greater Portland, Inc., and they work explicitly in recruitment. So looking both at international and national opportunities for relocation or extension of, of service, services to attract when companies want to relocate. And one of the things that they need is big lots. Washington County, and Sherwood in particular, kind of has the market on big lots right now, 50 acres plus. I'd love for us to find one or two 50-plus acres and make it really attractive so that it's ready to go and we can recruit the next big thing to come to Clackamas County.
Great, thank you. And Gary, I think we have time to go around for round two, correct? So I'm going to start with you again, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Chair. I was confused on your last comment. So here we go. Metro has made disproportionate investments in Portland at the detriment of Clackamas County. For example, service levels of transit service are grossly compromising Clackamas, with over 200,000 people without any transit service. Would you support a new transit provider based in Clackamas to serve the unserved areas?
I'm going to say yes, but then I also want to undo some of that question. That's TriMet. I don't think Metro necessarily has been underproviding. I think TriMet has been underproviding. Yes, there's a relationship between TriMet and Metro, but I think Metro has tried, particularly in my leadership of the last six and a half years, to stick up for Clackamas County and the level of service. TriMet has made one or two major investments, but has not actually looked beyond just a couple of capital investments into the level of service needed for our community. And if they're unable to amplify that service, then we're going to have to have a serious conversation. We already have Smart as quite the successful operator. I know at the county, you've got other transit that is provided, and I've heard from mayors, particularly west side of Clackamas, that are interested in seeing what a community-level shuttle or jetney-level, level of service could look like, and I'd be supportive of that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Yeah, I'd like to get some of your thoughts on workforce, workforce training, job creation. You know, I, I serve on the WTDB, which is a, you know, one of the workforce boards at the state level, and it seems to me that the system needs some overhauling. Have you got any thoughts about how we can enhance the workforce system and have a better pipeline for people in the trades as well as other occupations that are necessary for our communities?
Yeah, I think that's a really important question.
Thank you.
And I love that, when we cut the ribbon at the courthouse, when you cut the ribbon, I was just there cheering. That was the first Construction Careers Pathways Project completed in Clackamas County, and I think that framework is one to learn from. And it's looking at public projects as not only supply, but also demand for apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship training. And if we're going to continue to have strong trades, the apprenticeship programs and the pre-apprenticeship, where you not only learn some of the basics about showing up with your tools, but you learn, oh, maybe I don't want to be an electrician. That's a lot of math. Maybe I'm going to be better off as a laborer. But the pre-apprenticeship programs being part of that is really critical. And I think when I look at what workforce boards across the state do, but particularly in the metro area, they try and take people too quickly from where they are to where they want to go without looking at the apprenticeship steps. And I think that there are a lot of opportunities to cut through that, particularly with jobs outside of the trades, where the certifications are easier, flatter, and quicker. And I would love to dig in on where we can do a model apprenticeship outside of the trades.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner West?
I'm totally going to pivot away from my question that I was going to ask you. You, just in conversation and listening to your answers, and a lot of our, we've gotten together quite a bit and know each other well, and it just spurred another question that we've already talked about. I'm going to go back to SHS. So earlier this year, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I signed a letter about where Clackamas County was, about these proposed reforms around SHS. It feels like that the cities and the counties are miles apart right now still from Metro. Right now, as you know, I'm co-chairing with Lynn Peterson, the task force, to try to right the ship on this. And in good faith, we have all been working very well together to try to figure out how to build trust again with the voters. And one of the sticking points is, is that when we passed the SHS tax, we told the voters, 10 years from now, we're going to get a handle on this. We're going to rock this. We're all hands on deck. We are going to meet the, the crisis head-on. Some of us in the region have, some of us clearly have not. Clackamas County has a vastly different model in how to approach this than, like, what's being done in Moema County, right, for example? But as we're now getting up and built out a real system, we're now facing a tax cut. None of us liked writing that tax cut, at least I know in Clackamas County. When I write that check, I know that it's going to a competent government doing competent work to help people get the care they deserve and need. I would lose my mind if I had to write that check to Moema County. Thank God I get to write that unpleasant check to this county. So my question is, with a looming tax cut, no real accountability up to this point, no voter trust, then asking for a 20-year extension, while the polling right now is damning and dangerous for the entire measure, how do you justify a tax cut at this time for critical services that's a crisis? That's where we're looking to cut, not other places, but at the crisis point is where we're looking to cut, to me, is concerning, which I know the public is probably, once again, wild to hear me defend a tax. And then, and then to, like, without any public tracks, extend this thing for another 20 years with no, with, with the lack of proof of concept. Can you kind of maybe talk to that a little bit further and parse that out and justify where you're at?
Yeah.
We might disagree a little bit on my-
I think we do disagree, and that's okay, because we've actually been able to demonstrate we can have a healthy disagreement.
Yes.
And that's what people in our community want to see. They want to see people who are thoughtful and are willing to say what they actually think, but also in a way that's respectful and productive.
Agreed.
And you just laid it out in a super respectful way, that you don't want to see a tax cut at all. I've, in my previous comment, already said that I'd be supportive of a tax cut if paired with an extension, because what I see is this looming date of 2030, in that we are not going to extend past 2030 without some combination of, of cut and accountability. And we can do everything we can leading up to 2030 to try and, you know, at that date, be ready to say, look at what we did. But I don't think, look at what we did, is going to be enough, because the majority of people in this community look at Portland and say they didn't do their part, despite the fact that here in Clackamas County, we took a very small system, and we actually invented something new that is working.
That did not exist.
That did not exist, yes. You, you built whole cloth, and you actually spent the full first year planning, and ironically, Metro, with the planning agency, said, don't plan, do. But you know what? Planning worked for you. So that actually was a good idea, to spend the first year planning, building a new system that's now working very well. And at the end of the day, I don't want to play chicken and be there in 2030 with people who have vouchers and are going to lose their housing if the measure fails. I don't want to be there in 2030 with Clackamas- I don't want to be there in 2030 with Clackamas Village that's going to operate at $1.5 million a year, all of a sudden no longer having revenue. I would rather say, how can we build trust not only through good work on the ground, but say, look, this is going to be a radically different governance model that is not just moving people through systems that have been shown to fail. We have to have outcomes and not just outputs that are measured. We have to have people who are finding success in their housing, or else that program doesn't get renewed in people's minds. They count success based on what they see on the street. All the numbers in the world that we can put on charts are not going to matter if we don't make a real difference on every street corner.
Do you support, two things really quick, do you support maybe the tax cut, which would devastate the system we built right now, and we're terrified that that cut would just, all we would do is vouchers? Do you support maybe pushing that till 2030 before we see those cuts kick in to give a little more adjustment time if necessary? And right now, there's conversation about reallocating all the funds to Portland, Monoma County, and so taxpayers in Clackamas County would now be subsidizing Portland, Monoma County, changing the allocation format. I'm wondering if you support that effort and to the last clarifying question, to 2030?
To the tax cut, I'd be happy to have a conversation about making it graduated. But at the end of the day, we have to make it sometime soon, or at least send the signal so that the high-income earners who could be leaving right now because of the tax structure don't leave our region. In terms of reallocation, we absolutely have to fight. Every dollar that gets paid in Clackamas County has to come back to Clackamas County. There's about one-fifth of the dollars that are what we would call unknowable, because if you pay a plaid pantry tax, which plaid pantry? So that is what's being talked about, is being reallocated to Portland, and I'll fight for a third of them at least to come to Clackamas.
Thank you.
All right. So a question I have really has to do with some priorities, and if hypothetically, if Clackamas County received an additional $5 million in funding to be used for any purpose, what would be your recommendation how to propose to spend it and why?
Just $5 million? That's easy. Five million, put it in Sunrise. That unlocks jobs, it unlocks housing, it unlocks safety, it unlocks neighborhoods. Put it in Sunrise.
All right. Thank you. We have 13 minutes left. Do you think we have enough time to do one more round?
I'll be quick. I'm pithy.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Savis, you're up again.
I appreciate your willingness to be here today. Thank you. When I ran for this position, I realized I was running for a position that had a half-population or a quarter-population unincorporated rural, half-a-population unincorporated urban, half-a-quarter population incorporated urban and incorporated rural. So quarter, quarter, quarter. Okay? I also realized we also ran for a position where we had districts, right? So we wear different hats. So all that said, with that framework, unincorporated communities are often criticized by cities and others, that they should be incorporated, or not unincorporated, right? And it is though we don't accept the position that we run for, or we somehow disrespect people for being either rural or unincorporated. What are your thoughts about that?
Oh, that's really hard, because I think there are multiple kinds of urban unincorporated areas. There are the urban unincorporated areas where the communities have come together and patched things together to look and feel like a city as best they can and want to have those services. And I've definitely been supportive of 2040 planning grant that went to one of those communities that wanted to study what road infrastructure and parks might look like, what levels of service for emergency services like police might look like if they were to incorporate or if they were to annex. But then there are other areas of urban unincorporated that don't have that interest. And I don't think that, from the government's side, we should force that upon them. I want to be supportive of communities that want to explore, and in particular, think through what services are most important from a city or incorporation level. And I think in this day and time, public safety is one of them. Don't know how effective it is to have multiple layers that are still just provided by the sheriff, and also starting up a new public safety agency is hard. There's already about 20 public safety agencies in the county. And do we need another? No. Do we need more resources for every single one of them? Absolutely, yes. So what is the most effective way to get the next best dollar into actual service and not just another agency would be how I'd ask the question.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick follow, and that is that it is...
If I could interject, I'm sorry, we're supposed to ask one question, and I want to make sure we get through, we got down to 10 minutes. So if you wouldn't mind, Paul, I'd like to move on. So Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Well, I have an interesting question here, because I've been really involved in the National Association of Counties. So this is, I hope, an easy softball fun question. Is that something that you would also be very interested in attending nationally in order to help advocate for our county, not just our county at the national level, but for other counties as well? Is that something that you've looked at and think would be useful?
I would love to be a part of NACO. I would love to find a place to plug in, even with Association of Counties here in Oregon. I've been really lucky that I've been able to find some good national networks of local officials that have welcomed me even as the one and only Metro. And I love getting to advocate for local government, the local control, and the place where rubber meets the road in a nonpartisan, community-oriented neighborhood scale. So yes, sign me up for NACO. In my work with the Willamette Falls Locks, I've been able to go back to DC with Pacific Northwest Waterways and been part of rooms across multiple states and different types of jurisdictions. And I think there's real power when you bring such diverse communities into rooms in DC. You actually not only hear the real story from those you're speaking with, but you can find clarity in the purpose of the policy question. So absolutely. And I'd be happy to work with you and your leadership roles as well.
Well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner West?
I love that answer. My question is, it's become very difficult for middle-class families to afford single-family homes with yards with a little bit of room for their kids to play, maybe a little swing set. Our housing costs are much higher than comparably sized metro areas around the country, and yet there has been little movement of metro-controlled urban growth boundaries, the most tangible means by which Metro can increase the housing land supply and mitigate costs. As a Clackamas County Commissioner, would you support expanding our housing land supply by expanding our urban growth boundaries?
Yes. I would have to work with cities, because I do agree that when we look at urban growth boundary expansion, cities should lead so that they have urban services from day one. But I would be happy to champion any Clackamas County city that's ready to move forward. In particular, looking through where we can do 2040 planning grants so that we are ready to go and that we have supported the cities in making their plans. Clackamas has had 2040 planning grants for expansion, and they've not been successful. There was one that you, I believe, applied for six times. You applied for, you rewarded it, and you applied for extension six times. You've applied again, and there's not enough detail. I think actually, we can ask for more money if there's more detail. So don't ask for $1 million for the whole county for both housing and industrial. Let's be specific. Let's say housing, and let's actually say adjacent to blank city. And let's ask for enough money so that we're not just studying transportation, we're not just studying land slopes and water and that, but we're also looking at where are the opportunities for types of housing and the connection to local districts like schools and parks.
Yeah, thank you.
And I have a question about kind of transportation infrastructure. What ideas do you have to create public-private partnerships to increase accessibility and affordability of transportation throughout the county?
Public-private partnership for transportation.
Yeah, or ideas that you have.
I think when I think about public-private partnerships, obviously, you've had a successful one with the courthouse. But I oftentimes think about either major infrastructure that's durable, or I think about services. So obviously, with transportation, that's either transit service, or it's a major investment in a line. And my hope would be that we'd be able to work with the transit provider on making the district that we already have better or getting a new district. I think that's maybe what you're touching at. But in transportation, I think that our roads should be public. I'm not really certain. I believe in a public-private partnership for roads themselves. So definitely would want to focus on transit provision and if there are opportunities for a district.
Great, thank you. Gary, based on our time, I think this would wrap it up.
That would wrap it up.
Right. So thank you very much. You are welcome to stay and hear some of the other comments if you'd like, or you're obviously free to leave. But thank you very much for coming today.
Yeah, thank you so much. I hope I can take just one minute to say that it's a pleasure to work alongside all of you. I find a lot of meaning and belonging in public service. I know all of you do as well. And I would look forward to the opportunity to put that to use for the citizens of Clackamas County writ large and not just those in the district I represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
All right, we'll do a quick transition here to bring in the next candidate, Jackie Mans.
Yes. Sorry. I always like to, so I don't. I'm going to run over and talk to mine. Why can't? She just told me that Gary doesn't. The one cares is Gary. It's the one that I'm worried about. She's not, she's a fucking idiot. She's not. And you've got time for your phone.
Yeah? There was time left on her time. That's how I looked at it.
Yeah. So. If there's, you don't have to be disciplined, but if there's time, and I want to follow up, but we love to, like, still have a clock. Like, a little bit of, like, some flexibility for, not get out of hand, right? But a little bit, maybe, okay? What do you think?
Yes. Yeah, we'll try and figure it out. Again, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Yes, and we sure thank you very much for your time and interest in this position. And we're going to go ahead and kick it off. Gary is going to ask the first two questions, and then the Commissioners are going to follow up with some questions of their own. So Gary?
Thank you, Chair. Again, these questions were decided by the Board of Commissioners. Question one, how would you advocate for the needs of both rural and urban residents, especially considering the unique challenges facing unincorporated areas?
I've pondered this a lot, especially in the context of Clackamas County as a whole. Of course, having been a counselor in Lake Oswego, we had pockets of unincorporated areas. And knowing that folks who live in those areas, citizens, feel very strongly about their unincorporated area and don't necessarily want to join a city for whatever reason, it weighs heavily on my mind. I think that the only way to do that is to get out and talk to the people, and I'm a strong believer in that. I know that in a county, it's a whole different ballgame than it would be in a city situation. But I would like to hear what people need, what they want. Of course, they come to meetings, but those that come to meetings aren't necessarily the people who are the ones most desperately impacted. They're generally people that have a very specific ask or want. So how would I settle that? Well, of course, there's always budgetary constraints. I don't know exactly what the split is between our rural folks, and I don't know what the split is between our more suburbanized, urbanized people. But to me, it seems there has to be equity in that. And when I say equity, I'm talking about a balance of funding. Is there development that can be done in those areas that would provide jobs for folks? Is there considerations that we can look at that would make things happen for them? That is really how I would begin to look at the problem. Again, I don't pretend, and I won't pretend in any way, shape, or form, that I'm an expert on this issue, given my background. And I think you've all read my resume, you know what I did in Lake Oswego. I'm a big fan of infrastructure. I'm a big fan of bringing jobs, especially small business, which I don't know how that works in the rural picture, but would be totally willing to explore that avenue in bringing forth some equity between our suburbanized, urbanized areas and our rural areas.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Question two, tell us about when you had to compromise within a team to move a project forward. What did you learn from that experience?
In Lake Oswego, I had the great fortune of working with two very distinct councils, politically and ideologically mixed, but all who had a very strong feeling for the city of Lake Oswego. I would say my passion for pathways, trails, open spaces, getting people out into public, as well as providing infrastructure, safety, safe routes to school, large construction projects, have been some of the areas where I've had some of the most debate, especially when it came to open spaces and purchasing open spaces. It was not always a politically interesting idea for people in developing parkland or leaving it open. So that's really where I experienced the most pushback in working with the team. In addition to which, I will say that my position on public safety varied slightly from some of my colleague's position. And I will be perfectly clear with that, I'm a strong believer in a strong public safety. I will say that right up front, whether that's politically expedient or not. I really, that doesn't trouble me in the least bit. I really believe that we have to have people feel that they're safe in their community, whether it's rural, urban, whether they are experiencing addiction, which is a hard one. How do you manage that? That's another area that I will be perfectly honest and say, I did not have that experience in Lake Oswego, because obviously, if there were issues, people came to the county level of service. We in Lake Oswego didn't have that level of service. So how do you balance those things? I mean, I would love to ask what each of you thought and decided that putting myself forward for this position would be one way to get to the bottom of what troubles me deeply.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we're going to transition over to the Commissioners asking some questions. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah. Do you support congestion pricing?
No. I do not. Again, when you're talking equity, and I know that there are always budgetary constraints, and there must be ways to make money. Gas taxes are down, revenues are down. I do not support congestion pricing. We in Lake Oswego didn't have that level of service. So how do you balance those things? I mean, I would love to ask what, what each of you thought and decided that putting my, myself forward for this position would be one way to get to the bottom of what troubles me deeply.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we're going to transition over to the Commissioners asking some questions. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah. Do you support congestion pricing?
No. I do not. Again, when you're talking equity, and I know that there are always budgetary constraints and there must be ways to make money. Gas taxes are down. Revenues are down. I do not support congestion pricing.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. Good morning, Jackie. It's great to see you here today. Yeah, well, fellow, also counselor at 1.2.
There you were, indeed.
For a while. So I'm going to start out with an urban rural interface issue because, you know, I've had my foot in both worlds for 36 years on the farm and now again, and you're in our neck of the woods, Lake Oswego. And there are sometimes tensions between the cities and, you know, in rural areas versus the urban areas. Such that we have a Clackamas County Coordinating Council that's helped with that. But also the metro issue that metro does not perceive our rural areas as part of a regional decision-making process. Now, I'm not saying that they should, but, but it seems to me they discount the economies of our rural areas. Could you speak to that kind of, to me disconnect that I see?
Again, in my limited Clackamas County rural experience. I often feel, now of course, living in Lake Oswego, being a counselor when I was in Lake Oswego, I had a very Lake Oswego-centric view. But I knew from my time on Travel Oregon, traveling the state of Oregon, and seeing our rural communities in general, not just in Clackamas County, that they are often the forgotten folks when it comes to decision-making, which again speaks to my point of why I would like to get out and do town halls. I know that's, again, something that people aren't advising from a political expediency in this day and age. But I would like to hear what people have to say. I feel passionately, as the daughter of a farm woman who grew up in Minnesota on the farm, working the farm, that her parents worked from their parents, that these issues are important. Our rural folks supply not only the food that feeds us, not only the recreation, more and more so over time because of changing demographics and people not wanting to work the farm. It's, it's important to hear that perspective. So leaving people out of any conversation, regardless of who they are, to me, does not bode well in taking a holistic approach. And I truly believe that speaking, having a voice for the rural community is important. Even though, you know where I live. You know, you know where I came from. You all have my, my resume. I've lived around the world. But if you look anywhere in the world, you find these similar issues in this country, in this state. There's similar issues. There's a rural, urban, or suburban divide. So again, I'll just repeat to answer your question more succinctly, that I would like to meet with people. I would like to hear what they have to say. I would like to bring that back as part of a focus on bringing folks together and to the table.
Great. Thank you very much. For your answer, and Commissioner West.
Thank you. In Oregon, we are facing a lot of different crises, in all, in my opinion, unfortunately far too many. And one of those crises that the governor has definitely highlighted is our housing crisis. In Clackamas, within, in Clackamas County and within the region, she set quite audacious goals to meet the housing crisis. We are nowhere close to actually meeting the housing goals that the governor rightly set forward to address the housing crisis that we all face and are concerned about. Currently, Borland is prime for development, right there by Tuolton 205 area. Do you support the development of housing in Borland? Would you support Clackamas County needing to leave the three-city or five-city IGA to get that done, to get housing built? And if you agree with that, how would you work to promote all housing types here in Clackamas County to meet this very bold goal by the governor?
I see you have the easy question there, Commissioner. Thank you. I believe that a five-party IGA could be done. I think opportunities were missed.
Well, clarification, we are in that five.
Right, but I'm saying, I'm saying with the five-party IGA, I think opportunities have been missed when financing, for example, was optimum. If we could have worked a little harder, a little faster to bring folks together, which politics is politics, and I won't argue that what happened, happened. But in this conditions that we have right now, I am concerned about funding. I'm concerned about who would take on this particular process and what the county would be able to provide. I mean, how would this, this look? Would it be reduced SDCs? Would it be reduced infrastructure costs or anything else that the county could do? That is going to be problematic because the county as a whole has a larger burden of public behavioral health, mental health, addiction that has ramped up over, what, probably since the pandemic and even before. But we've experienced it more. Do I support Borland? That is a very, very tricky question to ask a Lake Oswego person. I will be perfectly honest with you. If done right, and really productive and cost-effective, and units were built that didn't cost $600,000 per unit, I think it might be time to explore that. I truly do. But my major concern on that is funding. And I know I'm going to take, I, I will, I will hear from folks in Lake Oswego about that, but I think it's, it's time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I have a question about economic development. Clackamas County prioritizes business expansion, retention, and attraction. What proactive strategies will you implement to recruit businesses to Clackamas County?
To recruit businesses to Clackamas County, we have one thing. It's my understanding. We, we do, we have land. We perhaps don't have the infrastructure to promote the big business that we might want to have. But most importantly, what sort of business do we want? I would have to look at that. Do we want server farms? Do we want high-paying positions like a precision cast park? Do we want biotronics or future campuses where they're doing work with AI or anything looking toward the future? If we're looking simply at server farms, I'm, I'm not really sure what the ROI is on those in the long run, given our natural resources. We have an abundance of water. We can use our water. But like the rest of the country, we will, I feel, and this is my personal opinion, have a water problem. So I would really prefer to explore at this point in time than giving you a succinct, direct answer. I'm trying to, but I am not 100% sure what sort of business would be the best fit for Clackamas County. It would be easy to build warehouses all over Clackamas County, but what exactly would that give us other than more traffic and trucks on our roads? That may be the solution. It could be decided. But I would like to see more high-paying jobs in Clackamas County.
Thank you very much. So we're going to do the next, Commissioner Savis, you're up again.
Yep, thank you. Metro has made disproportionate investments in Portland at the detriment of Clackamas County. For example, service levels of transit service are grossly compromising Clackamas with over 200,000 people without any transit service. Would you support a new transit provider based in Clackamas County to serve unserved areas?
I love that question. Thank you for that. I tried to promote parts of that in Lake Oswego for an intra-Lake Oswego transportation, which I know is small change. And if I'm not mistaken, Wilsonville has done just that. So I, I would support that, again with the caveat in this point in time that we do not know what funding for these large transportation projects is going to look at as far as receiving loans or funds from the national level. State level, I'm not sure. I have, I have particular thoughts, and this could be very controversial on the kicker. But I won't go into that in this position because it probably will not serve me well to bring up my, my very specific thoughts on that. But yes, I would support it to answer your question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, thank you for being here again, Jackie. My question now has to do with workforce. We have a somewhat of a fragmented system in this state. And what would you do, what do you think in terms of helping to streamline it, to get people jobs, to get them into the workforce, and to make sure that they have a good job with a good standard of living? So tell me what you know about our workforce system and what you think needs to be fixed or what you think is going great with it.
Well, having an older millennial son who works in manufacturing out in Beaverton and lives in Selwood in, in a small apartment, I'll be honest with you. Housing, workforce housing is, is amongst one of the most important things that we have. To speak to that issue of letting, of having a way for people to get to their jobs without sitting on 217 or 205 for an hour at a time is another issue. But primarily, I honestly believe it goes down to housing. If you are making $70,000 a year, which really is not a lot of money in a two-family household with, with kids, and I know folks who live exactly that lifestyle. Where do you live? How far do you have to go out and away from your actual place of employment to work? I think Mary's Woods did a wonderful thing in building supported housing on their campus, on the Mary's Woods campus on Highway 43, to be able to have a place where their folks could live because they were having a hard time recruiting people in the Mary's Woods system. I think this could work in a number of different scenarios. But I'm very, very concerned that our younger folks are not able to afford to live even close to the life that perhaps we were able to at the same age. I also am concerned with seniors. I'm going to throw this out there. I know you didn't ask this, but we have a lot of seniors who don't leave their houses because they're cash, cash-rich or house-rich. And those houses could in fact be turned over into inventory. And I'm not sure how that looks in all of Clackamas County. But if you, if you own your home outright and you live in Milwaukee or you live in Sandy, are you really going to move until you absolutely have to, even that house, though that house could be made available for a family? And then we have folks that simply can't afford to live in their own houses anymore, even, even in our more affluent communities. So all of these things come together, to me, to the bottom line of housing. And how do we address that? Am I done?
You are for that question, yes.
Thank you.
And now you have Commissioner West asking you a question.
Yes.
Thank you. One of the top priorities for voters in the metro area by recent polling, by a significant amount, is still the homelessness, housing, behavioral health crisis. It is absolutely a top priority of this county. We spend a lot of time working on it. And we're all concerned about this deeply across political spectrums. In Clackamas County, can you speak to the specific system we use and why we've outperformed the rest of the region in addressing this crisis? So I want to hear about that. And then how would you work with this board to ensure continued success when addressing homelessness and behavioral health crises?
Of the three counties, I feel Clackamas County has been the most successful in addressing what they can within the budget constraints that you have. I know that many of you worked on veteran housing for our homeless population, which to me is paramount. We need to serve those who served us. As far as how I would personally address that, Commissioner, I would like to leverage what we have as far as our, our good financial standing. We're known as a very well-managed county. And we're known, not just at the local level, but at the national level, as a county that is next to a county that is having a multitude of problems. I'll put it that way. So to leverage that, and again, bring in that investment in business, which is always easier said than done. It's really easy to say, I'm going to go to Tim Cook of Apple and, you know, get something set up here or whatever we can. But as we know, you, you apply, you're competing with people all across the country who are offering huge incentives for folks to move in. I mean, I look at, I have a daughter in Ohio, and I look at what Ohio has done, for example, as far as bringing large tech companies to Ohio or, or fab manufacturing or whatever the case may be. So I'm not sure if I totally answered your question.
Do you, do you know the specific system that we utilize here in Clackamas County and why it has helped us outperform the rest of the region?
I will say no. I will be honest and say no.
I don't have any further questions.
All right, thank you. And I have a question for you, which we, we don't have a lot of money, but just say by chance, we had an additional $5 million in funding to be used for kind of any purpose. How would you propose to spend that money?
Oh, the cheat code. Yes, okay. Five million. In this day and age, that is, and I, I can't believe, since I've been in government, I've said this before, not a lot of money. I think that that money would be well-spent on what Clackamas County just ribbon-cut, which is the shelters, the homes, the very many homes for the citizens who most need it. That would probably be where my slant would go for that sum of money. That is not enough to build huge infrastructure or leverage in any way, shape, or form. But I would probably go in that direction because that is bang for its buck. And perhaps, depending on what the homeless count is in our more rural communities, that might be the place to look at.
All right, thank you. You're the second person to have said that's not very much money. So.
Do me personally? I'll take it, okay.
All right, I'm back to Commissioner Savis, if I'm staying on track correctly.
Thank you. If another turnkey opportunity presents itself where the county could save $2 to $3 million annually, would you support it if the property itself was in good condition?
I wonder what you're talking about. Yes, if the property was in good condition and if there was, again, and if there was, again, that chance to leverage or partner with other folks, yes, of course.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, Jackie, one of the things that we deal with in this county, it's kind of a workforce question again, is there is a deficit of childcare in this county, which is a huge barrier for individuals to get to work, have a job, provide for themselves and their families. What would you do to help increase the capacity and access to childcare for our working families in Clackamas County?
I'm a big believer in the apprenticeship program. I am married to a European, so I have experiences and know in this. I think that in our high schools, and I am talking all of our high schools, there could be a program for early childhood development or childcare where we could perhaps guide folks into these professions if they're so interested. Now, it has to be a heartfelt love because, as we know, these professions don't pay probably anything near what, if any of us who've had to put children in childcare know their worth. But I do like the idea of apprenticeships, early childhood development, moving children through, and not waiting until the community college level to do this, but offering such things in high school, which I'm sort of veering over into something that is not into our lane, which is obviously school districts.
It isn't directly, but workforce, working, our workforce system works directly with our school districts.
Right, okay.
On these issues. So there is a nexus, not...
Wasn't too off-base on that one, okay?
Not at all, no.
All right, thank you. Commissioner West?
My question's based on an answer that you gave previously that is spurring this question, and it weighs very heavy on myself and I'm sure everyone here today. And my son said to me the other day is that I don't think I could afford to live where I grew up. And we were talking about that. He's currently residing in Texas. And I couldn't afford to buy the home I live in today. You know, I'm in my 40s, and working families like mine, they just can't afford it. And many of our constituents earn a living by putting tools in a truck and traveling to a job, traveling to job sites, working families. Our working families have some of the longest commutes and travel costs of all three counties in the Portland metro area. They need access to middle-class housing and to be able to get from point A to point B. But our housing costs are too high and our roads are clogged. What would you do as a Clackamas County Commissioner to help these working families with transportation needs and middle housing issues?
Thank you for that question. I do appreciate it. It's very near and dear to my heart on a personal level. Our roads are clogged. One of the things that I live in fear of is major expansions of highways and freeways only because they will fill up. They will. I mean, it's just a matter of physics, really. If you have a road and there's a wider, bigger freeway or highway, you'll be able to use it. However, that said, here in Oregon, a lot of our infrastructure was not built for any sort of commute from one place to another. Our infrastructure was not built for a commute between Selwood and Beaverton or Malala and downtown Portland. It simply wasn't. In fact, oftentimes you drive on a road and you go, am I on the right road? Because it'll seem like a two-lane highway. And in fact, it is a two-lane highway. We truly need to have more housing, the conundrum, I think it's an ageless conundrum, it's all across the country, to have housing where people are working, where the jobs are. The problem is not everyone wants to live close to where the jobs are. But if they do, they should be afforded that ability. It should not be this problem of folks having to commute two hours a day, like you say, in the truck with the tools in the back or the landscaping equipment or whatever it may be. Or even those folks in the medical field who are commuting from one end of town to the other because that's where the job is at. And I can't imagine, as, say, a traveling, someone who travels between hospital units, for example, what that would mean in trying to get around if in fact you have to do that. Or home care, which again goes back to our elders who want to stay in their houses, myself included. I'm in that demographic. I want to stay in my house. But how do we make that happen? Well, we have to invest in roads. Do we have to widen roads? Do we have to expand roads? Do we have to make them bigger? Can we make them smarter? I don't have the answer to that. I'm not a transportation expert, but I would certainly like to invite everyone to the table and get ideas about what could be done around that.
All right, thank you. And I have a question for you on transportation infrastructure. What ideas do you have to create public-private partnerships to increase accessibility and affordable transportation throughout the county? Do you have any ideas on that?
It's difficult to find a private partner who can fulfill both their ROI needs and their civic need. And this I know from experience. We worked on a, in Lake Oswego, we did work on a water treatment plant project that was to be a private-public partnership and will go forward in one way, shape, form, or another. But it was not as easy as I thought it was. As far as transportation goes, there must be private vendors who would be interested in that. But I would imagine that their startup costs would be phenomenal. So I don't know how I would recruit them personally if it were just me trying to recruit someone. I know with Frog Pond and the River taxis, I thought that was a fabulous idea. But that sort of disintegrated. It may still be in the works, but I quit hearing about it. I've heard and worked with electric vehicles along the trolley line in Lake Oswego. That did not go far at all because the trolley line in Lake Oswego is kind of Sanch script and we're not allowed to utilize that. But I'm open to everything. And I would be very curious to see how other cities and counties who have managed that well, large size, lots of space, lots of space in between locations have done that. I don't know, I know in Arizona, you have very wide freeways because it was wide-open land. We don't always have that possibility. And with our land use laws, that too becomes an interesting conundrum because you would be probably looking at different formats of land, if you will.
All right, thank you very much. Well, that concludes our questions. You feel free to stay and watch the remaining interviews. Or I think we're ready for taking maybe a five-minute break. Is that colleagues, or would you like to power on?
I'm fine. I can go either way, whatever.
Let's take a five-minute break and refresh. Thank you very much.
And I just want to close by saying, it is an honor. I know this is not easy, what you're doing. And I totally appreciate the thoroughness. And I did mention, Carolyn, the absolute attention to detail in taking our phones, for example. I was impressed by that. I wouldn't have the guts to do that.
I probably should have taken ours, too.
That was great.
Thank you very much. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess. All right, we'll reconvene the special meeting for Commissioner, position number four selection. And now, welcome, Mr. Goodman. We'll begin by Gary Schmidt asking two questions and then transition to the board asking some follow-up questions. So Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair. These questions were decided by the Board of Commissioners. Question one, how would you advocate for the needs of both rural and urban residents, especially considering the unique challenges facing unincorporated areas?
Certainly. Each Commissioner is elected to serve the entire county. And there's always a balance because we have limited resources, we have limited time to find the right balance between the rural, urban, and suburban, because you've got all three in our county. An example of where I've worked in the rural area was I was one of the leads in helping to bring about the five-party and three-party agreement in the Stafford area, where for decades you'd had arguments, legal battles, numerous, the three governments, the five governments going back and forth, and of Salem, to try and come to some kind of resolution. And it reached the point, and the timing was right, where both sides recognized that there was going to be some resolution, and they retired the legal fees. And we were able to come together and bring a five-party agreement covering the Stafford area, which is a rural area within our county. And it was approved unanimously, I want to emphasize that, unanimously by five governments: City of Lake Oswego, City of Tualatin, City of West Lynn, Metro, and the county. And how many times have you heard about an area that was controversial that had unanimity among all five of those governments? That's an example of how I can take a leadership, and did take a leadership position in a rural area. I served on the city council of Lake Oswego. We are the largest city incorporated in Clackamas County. Although, as Commissioner Savvas has noted, if the Oak Grove area was incorporated, they would be the largest city. But that's a whole cattle of worms that is dealt with, that you all work with on a daily basis. And there's arguments, both pros and cons, to try and make it come about. But that's a skill set that I can bring to bear for my service, if selected, to serve as the next Clackamas County Commissioner, is an ability to work with all groups, ability to be data-driven, what are the facts, try and bring about that area of common, and also to keep a sense of humor about it, acknowledging that we're doing the best we can and we're all going to fumble our way through it as we try and make a good decision. I'll also add, before I run out of time, I have 45 seconds, I'm very comfortable with somebody saying, Jeff, you're wrong. Or, sometimes it's been more challenging, Jeff, you're an idiot. My response to that has generally been, you're probably right, let's find time for coffee and go from there. That has been a very effective tool to help diffuse the situation. And most of the time, people accept it. And when we're done, they say, you know what? We actually have more agreement than what I initially thought. And you're not a bad person after all. So it's an ability to work with all sorts of people, to look on the facts, to look at the data, and recognize that never let the best be the enemy of the good.
All right, question two. Tell us about when you had to compromise within a team to move a project forward. What did you learn from that experience?
Thank you for that question. One of the items that I was most proud of from my service on city council was the building of the, replacement of the police and council headquarters and city administration offices. And it was a team effort. I was just one of many. The financing that was done by that was using urban renewal financing, which is a controversial matter for some. I happen to think it's a great tool. Like any tool, it can be used well or it can be used poorly, and both cases have happened. One of the issues with respect to urban renewal financing is about using it for public facilities. And how farst in should you go down that particular road? I was entirely comfortable with having the building be entirely devoted to a public use. But in discussion with my colleagues, it was recognized that other people on the council were not comfortable going down that road. And so the compromise that developed that came from, actually, one of my fellow candidates here today, former councillor Manns, made the suggestion, and it was a good suggestion, that let's bring in some retail. And there were two organizations in the city, Bookteak and the Arts Council, both who happened to be looking for additional space. They came in on the first floor of the new building. And the idea was to help, first, they needed the space, and secondly, to help activate at the street level, to bring people into the community downtown area to help continuing the revitalization of the downtown. I would have been perfectly happy having the entire building devoted to public service, the administration of the city and the police department. But that wasn't going to happen. Quite simply, the votes were, I don't think the votes were going to be there to do that. And so after a lot of discussion with staff and with other council members, it was said, okay, let's have the space go. And when it was finally approved on that financing, it went through 7-0. Everybody got something, nobody got everything. And if you were to describe a model for me in terms of trying to come to decision-making when you're involving multiple parties, which is absolutely the essence of serving in public service, whether it's that the county, the city, a school district, any other organization is, nobody's going to get everything, but you need to make sure that everybody gets something. Now, the challenge with that approach is, from a business perspective, narrow dollars and focus dollars are more effective than broad and thin. But you need broad and thin dollars to get everybody on board. And so you constantly work to try and find that right balance.
Great, thank you. All right, now's the time to transition to some of the Commissioners that have questions. And so Commissioner Savvas leads us off here. Commissioner Savvas?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Goodman, do you support congestion pricing and why?
My educational background is in economics. Congestion pricing is a tool for the mitigation of traffic. You have, quote, "a free good," unquote. By putting a price on it, you get the marketplace beginning to help allocate those resources. Now, what I've just said is a lot of economist policy speak. Congestion pricing has its challenges because it involves tolling. There's no other way to describe it. I support what the county and the other cities here along Interstate 205 have done in their opposition to tolling along the entire Interstate 205. Because the challenge with congestion pricing, and tolling in particular, is diversion. An example that we have facing us now is going to be tolling on the interstate bridge. That is going to produce diversion, not only into the streets in Portland, but also onto Interstate 205. And 205 now, during the busy hours, or at times it seems like it's busy hours, 12 hours a day, that tolling on the interstate bridge is going to increase that diversion. Now, I've lived in Oregon long enough to remember when there was tolling on the interstate bridge and going through and throwing the quarter into the basket and getting through. And when the tolls, when the bridge was paid for, the toll was removed. I think that's the kind of congestion pricing, if you will, tolling that can be effective for the paying of the interstate bridge. But unless you have something like, say, example in New York City, where you are able to control the access from a limited number of routes going into Manhattan, congestion pricing causes more challenges than it provides in terms of the benefits. In addition, you also have the administrative costs that are associated with congestion pricing. And how do you draw the line between those who are severely impacted, because all of their dollars are going up just for daily living? And where do you draw the line? How do you draw it? The administrative costs that are associated with that. It becomes a never-ending battle, and that never-ending battle and the administrative costs continue to escalate. So to go back to where you questioned, to where you began, what do I think about congestion pricing? It is an effective tool. It has its place. But as presently described for us here in Oregon, with the exception of the interstate bridge, it's not going to work.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, good morning, Jeff. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you. Welcome home.
I'm just, yeah, thank, I was very happy, just to give kudos to my colleagues up here who covered the job and got to do some great ribbon cutting while I was gone. And I actually got a picture from Mom, the President of the Senate, who said, "Let's all wave to Martha." And I got that photo while I was with my daughter, which was really fun.
It's wonderful.
I digress. In any case, I want to ask you a workforce question. You know, our workforce boards drive innovation, training programs, apprenticeship programs, so on and so forth, not just in our counties, plural, but in the state. What would you do to improve the system, streamline it, and get more access for people to get good-paying jobs in order to, you know, support themselves and their families?
Thank you. And you're right about the momentous week that had, the county had in the last couple of weeks, between the ribbon cuttings and the efforts going forward with respect to Bob's Red Mill. It was a pretty, I mean, if you were to take that for the entire year, it'd be amazing what the county would accomplish over the course of the year.
Absolutely.
But let me speak to the workforce housing question. I serve on the Board of Clackamas Volunteers in Medicine, now known as the Clackamas Free Clinic. I am, which will come as no surprise to any of you who know me, their treasurer. We have recently, in the last couple of years, moved our location onto Clackamas Community College. We were fortunate enough to get some ARPA funds through the legislature that went into rebuilding a portion of the Clermont Building at Clackamas Community College. We had our grand opening about a year or so ago, and some of you were able to attend that, for which we're grateful. Being at Clackamas Community College provides us, first, access to a lot of people who can take advantage of the service we're providing, but secondly, it gets us tied in with Clackamas Community College, because we have students there who are now coming through and participating and working at our clinic, gaining, if you will, internship, training knowledge of what it's like to be in the medical profession. Now, this is, there's not a lot of people going through it, we're a small organization, but that's one example of how we are partnering with a community college, if you will, a government entity, to help build the workforce that's needed for the county. I think there are many other examples that we can dive into, to continue that sort of partnership occurring, to enhance the workforce training that we have for people going forward. And on a global basis, I think we need to recognize, more than ever, perhaps even more than any time in the history of our country, of our state, and of our county, the number of jobs a person is going to have over the course of their lifetime is going to, it's not even a profession that they may not have even dreamed of when they were in college, or in high school. I think, for example, ChatGPT. When I was in school, ChatGPT would get a blank look, or even computerized spreadsheets, which now are ubiquitous everywhere. Those are tools that are used today. And so you want to make sure that that workforce training provides the people participating in that, the skills to be able to learn many new jobs as they go forward, because technology is changing so very rapidly, it has so many benefits, and you need to learn to adapt to it, to jobs that you may have, or may not, may or may not be already in existence.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. I'm very impressed with your answer so far. They're very concise and direct, so I'm going to ask you a tough one.
Ones you've asked already weren't easy.
So, we are in a housing crisis.
Yes.
And the region in Clackamas County are far behind on meeting Governor Kotex's very audacious goals after her emergency declaration.
Yes.
Currently, Borland is in a five-member IGA. We weren't necessarily in this housing crisis when that IGA that you worked on was formed, but Borland is currently primed for development. Do you, or do you not support developing housing in Borland? How else would you work, and if you do, how would you else would you work to support all housing types here in Clackamas County, to meet the demand, to make sure that we have housing available for our community?
A very small question that you've asked. And we could spend a lot of time going into detail on that, but let's start with the big picture. Number one, is both a demand and a supply question. And when you look at housing, number one, simply building more housing, period, whether it's high-end, middle, or low, is going to benefit us, because if you keep the demand constant, and you increase the number of housing, housing units, which is a terrible phrase, I put for homes, that is going to help. Now, also, on a global level, the recent population projections from the Office of Economic Analysis in the state of Oregon basically showed the population of Oregon being flat over the next decade, and possibly even now 20 years, maybe some modest growth. So, if we're not going to have any additional population growth, and we can keep plugging away with getting more housing in, that is going to help. Let's come down now specifically, though, to the Borland area. The question is, who is going to pay for the infrastructure? I spoke previously about the five-party IGA, the three-party IGA in the Stafford area, and there was a proposal from a few years ago, where there was a development proposal to come in, in the entire Stafford Triangle. And the developer who hired out some economic analysis was very upfront about saying they wanted to hoist off up to, I think, two-thirds of the infrastructure cost onto the three surrounding cities. Well, the three surrounding cities, and this is the same case for all the cities in Clackamas County in Oregon, don't have sufficient funds to maintain what they already have. So it becomes a question, if I support housing in the Borland area, sure, I'm going to support housing in the Borland area, but who is going to pick up the cost of the infrastructure? The legislature recently put in a package of a revolving fund, which developers could borrow. I think the dollar amount was posted was about $50 million. Well, quite frankly, while I would like to have $50 million in my back pocket, when you talk about $50 million for putting in housing and the infrastructure costs, it's peanuts, even on a revolving fund. You might get with $50 million, assuming you get additional bank loans, assuming you have additional equity from people building, $50 million might cover 100 units of multifamily housing. Now, I don't want to misinterpret it. Getting another 100 units is going to help, but the scale of the proposals that were being looked at aren't going to do it. What I, in my opinion, and if I had a magic wand, you're going to take, it's going to take a variety of tools, probably all, a number of them small, adding up to make an accumulated difference.
Right, thank you. So I have a question for you, really on economic development.
Yes.
And that is, Clackamas County prioritizes business expansion, retention, and attraction. What practice, proactive strategies would you implement to recruit businesses to Clackamas County?
You bet. That's a question I've thought about, though. Thank you. I'm glad you asked that. Number one, a core premise in business is that it's a lot easier to retain a business than it is to attract a new one.
Absolutely.
Pardon?
I'm nodding my head.
And, so, the first effort for economic development in Clackamas County is to making sure that we are constantly talking to, not only the staff, but I know you all, as Commissioners, are out in the community all the time, and receiving comments all the time. Talking to the larger businesses to say, what can we do to help? And there's ways you can do to help. I know the permitting process for expansion is now down, I think it's 45 days here in the county, which is very good, in terms from start to finish. Small thing, what could we do collectively to get it to 44? Does that seem like very much? No, it's not one day, but if you've got a development project, and you can take one more day off that process, that's going to help. In addition, you have a question of focus. I believe that the future for economic development in our county is the Sunrise Corridor, and that will benefit not only those businesses, those homes, the families and the residences along the Sunrise Corridor, it will benefit the entire county, and indeed, it will benefit the entire state. With the prospects of federal funding for Interstate 205, the Third Lane Expansion, I think it's fair to say that's off the table. It's not to say it's not desired, but it is off the table, at least for the next several years. Our focus should be along the Sunrise Corridor. And I think there may be an opportunity, and I have not had a chance to dive into the specifics or the numbers, and I recognize what I'm about to propose may have some controversy around it, because it's an urban renewal district. There is the potential to look at the numbers there, and something I'm quite comfortable doing, and seeing, creating an urban renewal district along the current portion, Phase 1 of the Sunrise Corridor, and where it might extend to, and see what tool, I mean, see what the kind of dollars that might be able to generate to help kickstart, if you will, Phase 2, in partnership, hopefully with the state, and possibly with the federal government. Recognizing that urban renewal financing is a trade-off, you're making a educated guess that the dollars you're going to divert, existing dollars, we're not talking new dollars, existing dollars will be diverted into an area which in 30 years' time will end up ultimately producing more property tax dollars than otherwise would have been done. But you have to recognize, and it's a phrase that I particularly like, and I used it frequently when I was on the City Council, if we do this, what don't we do? And then the follow-on to that is I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to start with round two, and that's Commissioner Savis starts it off again.
Thank you. Metro has made disproportionate investments in Portland at the detriment of Clackamas. For example, service levels of transit service are grossly compromised in Clackamas, over 200,000 people without any transit service. Would you support a new transit provider based in Clackamas County to serve unserved areas?
I would, the answer is, well, first, Commissioner Savis, thank you for your extensive and continuing work on the number of the regional boards advocating for Clackamas County and for transit. I've had the opportunity to watch you, not only when I was serving on City Council, but in subsequent years, watching you at J-PAC, M-PAC, C4, advocating exactly for what you're describing, and I thank you for that service. We benefit from that. Would I consider finding a way to serve those 200,000 residents who are not? Yes. Let's see if we can find a way to figure it out. Number one, the dollars are going to have to come from somewhere, and so I'd want to find out, if we do that, what aren't we going to do, and what do we say to the people who are now taking those dollars from, where we might have used it? Those are important questions. But let me propose an earlier, another alternative to explore the actual demand for transit service in our county. I think there's an opportunity for the county to partner with the various cities where TriMet and other transit agencies in the county are doing, to put in shelters at the various bus stops, to see if we get an increase in the number of people who are taking mass transit. Now, this is the chicken or the egg question. Do we simply enhance the service for people who are already taking the bus, or does putting in some shelters add people who'd say, you know, now that I'm going to be waiting in the rain, I'm going to be sheltered for that while I'm waiting for the bus to come, or for MAX to come, although MAX is much better in terms of providing shelters. So I think there's an opportunity there to say, let's go to all of our cities in the county where there is TriMet service now, and say, and to TriMet, and say, we've got three parties, let's split the cost, whether it's one-third each, or in some way, to put in shelters where the buses are already running, and then measure the number of people who are getting on. I can't give a definitive answer as to whether we add new people, or just simply make it better for those existing people, but it's a small-dollar experiment that I think is worth trying. Coming back to the initial part of the question, expanded transit service for those areas of the 200,000, as you mentioned, where it's not currently in place, yes, I want to look at it, I want to see what the numbers are. We may be better off, rather than trying to create something new, is to take some of the existing transit districts that are geographically in those areas, and say, okay, what can we do to help you incrementally expand the geographic area that you're serving? Then we're not doubling up again on administrative costs, because it's a lot easier to add on a small delta, pardon me for going technical, than it is to create something brand-new.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're next.
Yeah, well, I'm going to kind of go back a little bit to workforce, another nexus, however. One of the issues that we deal with in this county is, we really have a childcare desert. It is a huge barrier to allow folks who, again, need to make a living and have the assurance that their children are taken care of, and are in a way where they can provide for their children and their family and afford that. But have you got any ideas or strategies about how and why we should increase the capacity of what we have here, in terms of service delivery with childcare?
There is no easy answer on that. We're not going back to the 1950s, for any number of reasons, where you had one person, head of household, if you will, working, and the other person staying at home, taking care of the kids. That was a model that worked then, for any number of reasons. We're no longer in that world. So you're going to have to find the balance between inexpensive childcare, quality childcare, and areas where you don't have a population sufficient enough to support a lot of childcare alternatives. I don't have a good answer on that. I wish I did. I think we can try and, again, talking with our larger businesses, see if that can be provided as a benefit to, for their employees. I believe that, I may be mistaken on there, so please don't quote me as being 100% accurate, but I think Nike at one point, and Intel at one point, offered childcare services for their employees. I don't know if that's still on the table for them, given the challenges that they're going through, but I don't have, I really don't have a good answer, because I don't think there is a good answer, because it's going to cost dollars. It's critical, because you can't have, you know, the two parents worried about what's going to happen with, you know, little Johnny or Sally, or Johnny and Sally, while they are working, or when something comes up. I think a benefit, one thing, just as a commentary, I've noticed that smaller businesses and smaller organizations generally try and do a better job with respect to childcare for their employees, because it's a smaller business, it's more like family to them. Now, how do you encourage that kind of attitude? I don't know. So, I'm not doing a very good job of answering the question, but I'm giving you an honest answer.
Well, I think the notion of working with our businesses is an excellent answer.
Okay.
So, thank you for that.
All right. Commissioner West?
Your knowledge on economics and finances is quite extensive, and it's not very often with somebody with your pedigree, we get, I get to ask a question like this facing the economics that we're, that we hear. I mean, your resume is clear, it is phenomenal, you're very qualified in these kind of issues. So Portland, right now, unfortunately, the Portland area, metro area, we're in an economic doom loop.
Yes.
That is an academic term. We're also just received concerning economic forecast reports showing significant headwinds for the state of Oregon in the area of economics. Because of your knowledge and expertise in this arena, can you please be candid with your answer? Why are we here? How does this impact Clackamas County? And who do, and how do we protect and bring economic resiliency to Clackamas County?
Okay. Thank you for the compliment. That has been the arc of my life in the finance and business world, as well as very extensively engaged in volunteer activities, as I hope I was able to identify in the application. The issue is, if we have a flat population going forward, I think Portland is going to continue to struggle for any number of reasons. I'm delighted with Mayor Wilson's positive attitude, but I'm not sure that Portland has hit bottom yet. When you have this highest, or second-highest marginal tax rate kicking in in the city of Portland, Multnomah County, and you have now clear evidence that people are leaving Multnomah County for that, now, we benefit from that, because people are moving into Clackamas County, and outside of the metro area. But let's talk about the three counties, Washington, Multnomah, Clackamas. Clackamas County is the only county among those three who is going into this fiscal year without facing a deficit. That's not something that happened overnight. That reflects years of work on the part of the commission, on the part of the county administrator, on the part of the team inside Clackamas County, because you have collectively, over time, asked those hard questions, and it is And it is one of my favorites, and since you've asked it, I hardly endorse it. Okay, if we do this, what don't we do? That's just a basic question to ask. I think we have to, well, I'll give an example of what we, as a county, can do, okay, to help that just internally. I'm an advocate of a two-year budget. I think the amount of time that staff spends preparing an annual budget is time that could be better spent actually delivering on the budget that they have. But I would also couple that with the ability, on a year-to-year basis, for each departmental head to keep the dollars that they don't spend. Because with that yearly budget, you oftentimes have the attitude, if I don't spend this money, I'm going to lose it. So having that ability to carry it over, but it's important to carry that, have, along with that, the identification of, what are you carrying the dollars over for? Are we saving the money for replacement of a particular piece of equipment? It's a two-part. You get to carry the dollars over, but you say what you're going to carry them over for. In terms of building resiliency, I believe the, from the recent Portland Business Journal, the number-one category is wholesale businesses here in Clackamas County. There are others, medical profession is another one. Doing everything we can, as I spoke about earlier, retaining existing businesses, focusing on the permitting process to make it as quickly as possible, without sacrificing the standards that we want.
Thank you. Great. I have a question, and that is, if Clackamas, if Clackamas County received $5 million in funding to be used for any purpose, how would you propose to spend it, and why?
What a problem to have. As the old saying goes, "From your mouth to God's ears." Number one, as I was prepping for the interview today, I was trying to find a list, a consolidated list of all the capital projects over the next 10 years that the county wants to do. Couldn't find it. I know it's there, it requires some time to assemble it. So I would want to take the first portion of that $5 million to find a way to get a consolidated list of all the capital projects, both urgent and just simply liked, that the county wants to do over the next 10 years. And then, with the work of the Clackamas County team, and approved by the commission, get those projects ranked. Now, in my perfect world, which will never happen, they would be ranked from number one all the way down to the one at the end of the list. I would be perfectly happy to have them ranked top third, middle third, lower third. And then, of the, and I'm sure there would probably be several hundred projects, let's say for discussion purposes, let's say there were 600. So you'd have 200 in the top third, 200 in the middle third, 200 in the bottom third. And then say, okay, with that $5 million, we're going to come together to try and figure out which one in this top 200 we're going to take. Now, without any additional background information, I will go out on a cliff and say, number one, it would go toward infrastructure. So unless there's a recurring $5 million coming in every year, I want a one-off money to go toward a one-off project. And if I were to pick a one-off project, or I'm going to go further, if I had to pick two one-off projects, I would want that $5 billion to go toward the Sunrise Corridor, recognizing that the total cost of the Sunrise Corridor is going to be a lot more than that. And then my number-two choice would be, what is a bridge in the county, probably in the rural area, but what's the bridge, number-one needed bridge that needs to be replaced?
Great. Thank you.
You bet.
And...
And may your wish come true.
Commissioner Salvis, you're up again, sir.
Yes. I'm sorry. Open this back up here. If another turnkey opportunity presents itself where the county could save $2 to $3 million annually, would you support it if the property was indeed in good condition?
At a high level, yes. Would want to see a lot more details behind it, as to what's the recurring costs, what's the one-time capital costs, who are we serving, why are we serving this particular population? But without any additional details, my generic answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
But if you want to share more details, we could have more discussion.
All right. I think we're, move on then. Commissioner Schrader.
So...
Another workforce question?
Well, one of, one of the things that we constantly deal with in this county is the tensions between urban, rural, suburban, and wild. How do you see melding all those areas of this entire county together for peace in our time, for a better term, given the diversity of the cultures of this county across the board, and the topography that is also challenging? And we have, you know, we've got the mountain to deal with, as well as, you know, urban, rural, suburban. So it's just, just kind of curious as to your thoughts of how, how do you manage all of that?
You bet.
Diversity.
First, it's a good thing.
Yeah. Okay.
I like talking with people who disagree with me. Don't get me wrong, I like being told I'm the latest thing since sliced bread, but that doesn't, not particularly helpful for me in decision-making. I want people to challenge my thinking. I'm willing to change my mind on an issue, as the facts present themselves, or as the situation changes. There's a wonderful old phrase from 70, 80 years ago, you know, "If the facts change, I'll change my mind." What would you have me do? That's number one. Number two is, you simply, and all of you exemplify this, you're out and about. People want to see you, they want to have discussion. You need to be courteous, you need to be friendly, you need to acknowledge that, okay, at the end of the day, we may not agree on everything, but be able to walk away from that discussion, hopefully with everybody saying, okay, I didn't agree with the outcome, but you heard me. Now, you talked about the wild, I mean, we have this marvelous resource called the Mount Hood National Forest, okay? It is an economic driver for us with the, excuse me, I don't want to use, I'm reluctant to use the word, but recreational entertainment opportunities. But at the end of the day, given the diversity of views, we're not going to make everybody happy all the time. But if I can walk away with somebody saying, as I referred to earlier, where I've been told, Jeff, you're an idiot, and my response is, let's go have coffee. A lot of the times, they didn't accept the offer, but those times that they did, we walked away saying, okay, I understand where you're coming from, it's a reasonable position, I may not agree with it, but, okay, but let's find other issues we can talk about. It's just simply being out there, being willing to engage. You cannot hide behind your office, or your desk, or a staff person. In particular, you don't blame a staff person, because the commissioners, at the end of the day, are the ones, this is where the buck stops, to use also an old phrase. I don't believe in saying it was staff's fault. The team here in Clackamas County is a very good team, and they do good work. Do mistakes get made at times? Yes. But as my late father used to say, if somebody tells you they've never made a mistake, there are two possible outcomes. One, they're lying, or two, they haven't ever done anything. So you accept the premise that I'm going to make mistakes going forward, and if I'm out in the rural area, or in the urban area, or the suburban, or the wild, and I make a mistake, acknowledge it. I screwed up, and go forward from there. People will forgive you mistakes if you acknowledge it. It's where you try and cover it up.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And that's time, Chair. Okay. And Commissioner West.
This time's up, you have, there's one minute left.
Oh. I would love to ask another one, but that's okay.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I wasn't paying attention to that clock. So, thank you very much, and for your time, feel free to stick around, watch the remaining interviews, or obviously you can leave, but we'll go ahead and move to the next candidate. But thank you, Jeff.
I appreciate the offer of lunch, which I accepted.
Okay.
And I hope you have a great story about how you hurt your arm.
Okay.
Had to have been skiing down Mount Hood in an area that's never been touched.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you for this opportunity to be of service.
All right.
All right, we're transitioning to the next candidate, just need a few minutes, a few seconds, please.
What did happen?
That's a little bit of a story.
You weren't chopping wood, I hope.
Microphones are on, Commissioners. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Hello. Hello there. And we're going to go ahead and get started, and just to give you an update, Gary's going to ask two of the questions, and then what's going to happen, each of the commissioner will have a couple of questions they're going to ask you. So I'll turn it over to Gary, and you want to go ahead and ask the first question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. These Commissioners were decided upon by the Board of Commissioners. Question one, how would you advocate for the needs of both rural and urban residents, especially considering the unique challenges facing unincorporated areas?
Oh, boy. Number one, I think we kind of ignore some of our rural communities in Clackamas County. It's a really large county, goes from the mountains to the river. I, I think, I think we need to get into a area where we can better, I would need to, I know that, do more research in these areas and find out what their needs are. And I know in Malala, Estacada, some of these surrounding communities, they're growing at rapid paces, and what do they need to support the services that they are trying to provide to their communities? So I think we can, I think we can do a better job with that. And I also wonder, too, where our budget dollars are going to these communities.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Gary.
Question two, tell us about when you had to compromise within a team to move a project forward. What did you learn from that experience?
Wow, I could name quite a few of those. I'm all about compromise, number one. I think it's one of the best things we can do as citizen representatives for our communities. When I was on the Damascus City Council, we had a lot of new issues before us, namely the development code, things having to do with tree cutting, things having to do with building codes for a city that kind of never went forward, and there was a lot of compromise going on in the room at the time. And it came down to listening to everybody that came forward, taking that information in, and trying to make the best possible decision to keep as many people happy as possible. And not everyone is going to leave the room happy, but it was a compromise that we had, especially with the tree cutting. We got a lot of flak for that, because we, it took us three years to do a tree cutting, a tree ordinance, and it was really geared to the developers that were coming into the community, and not for the existing property owners. And it was because we felt that that was a natural resource that should be preserved, and so that when development came, they weren't, they weren't going away. So we, we had a lot of meetings, and we talked about how to make it equitable for everyone. And that's, I think equitable is, is keyword there, too, to make compromise.
Great. Thank you. And now, we're going to start with the Commissioner questions. Commissioner Salvis starts it off, so go ahead, sir.
Thank you for being here today. My question, do you support congestion pricing, and why?
Not on, not onto a five, but I am not opposed to it at the I-5 bridge. We have a lot of people coming into the state that are using our roads, a lot of people that live in Vancouver that work in the Portland area. I don't think we should be tolling I-205, because that affects our local community. And I am very opposed to tolling on 205. I am open to the idea of it on the I-5 bridge, however, because we need to replace that bridge badly.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, good morning. It's nice to see you today, Diana.
Nice to see you.
I'm going to ask an issue, again, one of my big issues has always been workforce, and as you know, we have workforce boards at the local level, we have a workforce system at the state level, you know, and they're really important for our regional economic goals, and, you know, getting people the training they need to do for jobs. Tell me what you know about our workforce system, and what ideas you may have to influence it and actually make it more robust, so people can get good-paying jobs.
Well, I'll be quite honest, I don't know a lot of in-depth about the workforce system, but I will say that I served on the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce Board for a number of years, and I'm still involved in that. I'm very much driven to keep us economically viable as a county, and I'm, I'm proud of the work that I do to support businesses. Also, I think that we need to do more to help people get into the workforce who are struggling. I don't know the details of that, Commissioner Schrader, and I'd like to do a little more research on it, but I do think that there's a lot we could do as a county to give people a lift on that. And I'm very much, I think, all of you know how, how business-minded I am. That's my background, right? And, and it's, it's what's a driving force to keep our county healthy, and our state, and our region. So, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner West.
Thank you for being here. As the mayor of Damascus, you ran to disincorporate the city, and when you won your election, you fought and did just that to help dismantle the city of Damascus. There's, there's a lot of history around the embattled part of Damascus, right, that we're all aware of. Can you give a brief explanation on why you worked to disincorporate the city of Damascus in the, in the position you were elected to serve in? And then how would you operate differently as a county commissioner in Clackamas?
Well, I oftentimes joke that I'm the mayor that killed the city, but I didn't kill the city. What happened was, I gave the voters the opportunity to vote on it again. When we, when our first incorporation election came up, the information we were given as citizens was not entirely enough for us to make the right decision. We were told we would be in charge of our own future, that we could control growth, that we could do all these things. And yet, when we became a city, and I was attending upwards of four to five meetings a week, come to find out, we were mandated to grow, and a lot of people in Damascus did not want that. You had three factions. You basically had the people who were, oh, we're a city, we're in the UGB now, our property's worth a ton of money, we're, you know, dollar signs in our eyes, and you had the people who were like, I moved out here, so I don't have any neighbors, I don't want to know my neighbors. And then you had a middle group that was kind of, were open to growth, but if it's done the right way. And then in the meantime, we had a ballot measure put on that said, any comp plan that the city put forth had to be approved by the voters. And at that point, I think we did six of them. They were all, they were all voted no on, because people were anti-growth. And so I think that I wanted the people to say, do you want to keep going down this path, because we're going to keep throwing good money after bad? And, or do you want to not be a city anymore and go back to square one? Damascus was the biggest mistake Metro ever made, and they know that. And 10,000 acres has never been added to the UGB, and never will again, probably at any given time. And I think the citizens needed an opportunity, and overwhelmingly, they said, no, we don't want to be a city. Had we known what we knew at the beginning, and that's, that's all I did. I championed that voice for the citizens, and allowed them to have that say.
Thank you for that answer.
And then you had a second part to your question.
Oh, and then how would that be different as governing style, as a Clackamas County commissioner, right? There's a, it's a different role.
Well, again, you listen to the citizens. That's your job. The citizens are our customers. Again, from that business standpoint, we work for them, we serve them. Your job is to listen, and I was listening. I was working hard to try to create a city that I could see was never going to happen. So it was, it was time to kind of end the pain for everyone. It was political pain, it was turning neighbors against neighbors, it was, it was a mess. And anyone who was involved in it at the time, there's no description for the kind of turmoil that it caused our community. So going back to being the community of Damascus was the best thing, kind of, for everyone. But as this, as being on a commission, number one, you're a team of people. We serve the citizens, and, and you listen, and you, you try to do what's right by them. And that's, that's what I felt I was doing as mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. My question's on economic development, and obviously, as a business owner, Clackamas County prioritizes business expansion, retention, and attraction. What proactive strategies would you implement to recruit businesses to Clackamas County?
Oh, boy. I just, you know, and I love to steal ideas from other places. That's one of the things. I would love to try to attract businesses. I think we're kind of inhibited with the industrial land supply issue that we have. I serve on the WEA Committee for Westside Economic Alliance Industrial Land Supply to try to get these numbers changed. We need more land for growing businesses in Clackamas County. I'm a big champion of that, and I want to, I'll continue on that. That's, there's certain things you kind of want to fight for that you know is going to help the county, and I think that's economically one of the things we really, really need to do, to open up some land for more business. And then wine and dine, or do whatever we need to do. Because we need to get more larger corporations on this side of town. We cannot survive with fast food and small businesses that are not paying living wages.
Right, thank you very much. And now we're going to go back to Commissioner Savis. You're up, sir.
Yep. Metro has made disproportionate investments in Portland at the detriment of Clackamas. For example, service levels of transit service are grossly compromised in Clackamas with over 200,000 people without any transit service. Would you support a new transit provider based in Clackamas County to serve unserved areas?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because we're not going to get the help from Metro. I think we all know that. And you know how I've been championing for transportation for years, and we get very little, and part of that, you know, Metro's Portland-centric, right? That's their focus. And we're so rural in so many areas, we have to have another option, just like Sam out in Sandy. We have to have a different option that's affordable, that is sustainable, and serves our people. We need to have definitely some other options.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I'm going to go back a little bit to, I think, something that you are aware of, too, that we have a childcare desert in this county. And one of the barriers to our, biggest barriers to our workforce is the ability to get quality childcare so they can provide for their families. And the other issue is, again, a total lack of physical capacity and workforce capacity. What are your thoughts and ideas of how we can improve this system so our citizens can get to work and know that their children are being well geared for?
I think one of the biggest barriers is the regulations involved, from what I've heard. And I think that we need to open this up to more privatization that allows more people to do this, that don't have to kind of meet the hurdles that I think the state and/or county have right now. A little more research should be done on my part there, too, Commissioner Schrader, because I, it's a huge need. And it's a huge need to get people back to work, the women back to work, the fathers back to work, who are doing the daycare themselves from home while they're trying to work. And I know that being on Zoom meetings with other people with kids in the background, it's a big struggle and it's a big juggle. I wonder, I would think that reaching out to the people who want to do it, who've not been able to do it, and if they've been turned down, is a way to kind of get some sort of feeling of where, what is the biggest hurdle, right? Is it people? Is it regulation? Is it pay? It's probably a combination of all those things, I think, that work against getting more people into that. So I know there's some industries that are over-regulated and some that are not regulated enough. And I think that's one that, rightly so, should be regulated, but are we making it too hard for people to get into it?
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner West.
Thank you. My question's being spurred by an answer that you gave in your application process. And I appreciate the answer that you gave, I just want to expand on it a little bit further. We are all concerned, I know you are, Ms. Helm, about the homelessness crisis and the behavioral health crisis, substance abuse crisis here in Oregon, specifically in the Portland metro area region, and even in our rural communities. In Clackamas County, can you speak specifically to the system that we are using and why it has outperformed the rest of the region? And how would you work with this board to ensure our continued success and how we are operating?
Well, number one, it is a more holistic approach, which I think other counties, other regions, other states are not using. The system of care that has been set up, and is still being set up, because I'm involved now with the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County, which gives just yet another aspect, another avenue for helping these people. It's, I would probably think that would be at the top of my list as things to advocate for. We have a lot of people on the brink of homelessness that are, we don't even know about, right? There's, it's a huge issue and it's getting worse. There's a huge disparity between pay and being able to afford a home anymore. It's coming together, and I know our numbers have come down drastically over the last two to three years, and I'm proud of Clackamas County for addressing it. But there's more to be done. And if we can fill in those gaps with other types of service providers, it's happening. I just would like to see it through fruition, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, and that is kind of what you see as kind of your priorities. If Clackamas County was to receive $5 million in funding to be used for any purpose, how would you propose to spend it and why?
Hmm, wow. $5 million falling out of the sky. That's, that's not a lot of money, number one. It's not a lot of money. You can only do so much with $5 million. I think that it's going back to the budget and seeing where our biggest issues are and what holes need to be filled. I would like, I would like to see it move forward in the Health and Human Services part. I think that's what we really need to focus on. That affects everyday citizens in Clackamas County, and I think that's kind of our biggest lift right now. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Savis, you're up again, sir.
Yep. If another turnkey opportunity presented itself where the county could save $2 to $3 million annually, would you support it if the property was indeed in good condition?
Depends on the location, which was the problem with the last one. So I think, I think that we do need a turnkey program. I just think that it needs to be one that is not controversial. And where that might be, that's a really good question. But I, again, the services that we're providing between the Recovery Center, HSCCC, there's a continuum now. I think it's, it is coming together, but that is probably the big gap that we have right now. And, again, more affordable housing, period. But the turnkey is part of it, and that's not part of the HSCCC, and that's not part of some of these other programs that are out there. So, yeah, I would. And I think that maybe that's where that $5 million goes, for a down payment on a new building, for a new location.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, this is probably going to be a big softball for you, but where do you stand on public-private partnerships? And can you give some examples of ones you've been involved in, and how have they helped people? And how has it helped the county?
I'm a big supporter of the three Ps, PPPs, yes. I kind of think it's the only way forward for a lot of things that we want to get done. It's a buy-in from the private community, be it corporations, be it individuals, people. We're working, you know, I've been on the Sunrise Corridor Visioning Project for, what, the last two years now, I think? And we're talking about making that public-private partnerships, too. And I'd like to see that get pushed through somehow by this, by this team of people. A specific one here, oh goodness. Can't think of anything off the top of my head, but the one I think of, the first is the Sunrise Corridor Visioning Project, and using funds to kind of get things going and moving them along, yeah. Sorry, I can't think of one off the top of my head.
All right.
Good answer.
Not so much a softball. But a big supporter, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner West, you are up, sir.
Portland metro area is in an economic doom loop. You have a significant business background and have worked with multiple chambers and tons, I mean, your resume is quite significant in this realm of understanding local economics and business. So we are in an economic doom loop in the Portland metro area. We also just received very concerning economic forecast reports showing significant headwinds ahead for the entire state of Oregon. With your background and knowledge, please be candid. Why are we here? How does this impact Clackamas County? And how do we protect and bring economic resiliency to the county, giving these facts?
Well, you have to start at the state level, number one. Small businesses are getting taxed out of the state. Having just closed my business last year, it's, I don't, honest to God, and I will be candid, I don't think anyone in Salem has ever owned or run a business. I don't think the decisions they make, the legislation they pass, the bills they pass, how it impacts the level of a small business, which is the machine of what runs our state, right? Every little tax, and they go, it's just a few pennies here, it's just a few pennies there. And that all adds up to, I have to let a person go, I have to cut this, I have to cut that, just in order to make a buck. And I think part of that starts at the state level. I think we can do things at our level, county level, to help impact that as far as giving breaks, you know, loosening some of the regulations that we might have to kind of help people get going. People are fleeing the state. And if people in Salem don't wake up and realize this, we will not have businesses here in five to 10 years. And that's just a frightening, it's a frightening thought that it could be an economic collapse in some ways. And I'm not, I'm not a doom and gloom person. I'm a half glass, glasses half-full all the time. But what I see happening is a total disconnect between legislation and what happens, boots on the ground. So it's got to be addressed. And it's going to take a coalition of counties to move forward and get together and go to Salem and say, this is not working. Or if they're watching this right now, maybe they can just say, oh, there's somebody out there in the small business community that actually knows what's going on. And come talk to us, because we do know what's going on. It's tough. And that's when, when we meet with the Chamber of Commerce, we're blown away. We're just blown away by some of the new bills that are going through right now, even as we speak. So it's bad, bad for business.
Thank you, Ms. Helm.
Thank you. So I have a transportation infrastructure question. What ideas do you have to create public-private partnerships to increase accessibility and affordability, affordable transportation throughout the county? Do you have some ideas on that?
I would need Jamie at my side for that.
We all need Jamie.
I know, we all need Jamie by our side. You know, specifics, no, I don't. Chair Roberts, I, I'm really passionate about transportation. I'm so tired of hearing about people talk about roads, 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 and our roads are not improved and they're not taken care of, and we have no money for roads, and, you know, where do we find the money for roads? There's things can also be done, things have been thrown around, like, let's do away with the DEQ test, right? 97% of all vehicles pass the DEQ test, right? And yet, we're still charging everyone to go through their, you know, every two years, right? Let's take that money and put it towards roads. Let's do some out-of-the-box thinking to support these programs that we need to fix, and they do need fixing. So how do you get the private sector involved in that? Do you get the trucking industry involved? Do you get some of the people out there that, you know, the EV people? There's probably a lot of, a lot of opportunity there that I would love to explore. Another one of my passions, transportation.
Well, thank you very much for your time this morning.
Chair, there's plenty of time left over.
Oh, okay. How would you suggest we do that, Gary? I want to make sure.
You've been very concise in your answers, so you've all done the two rounds, but if you have more questions, you could do another round.
I can keep going. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah. I'm going to ask you a unique question because of your unique experience. I have always been an advocate of incorporating the area that I come from, which is the Oak Grove area. However, it's always been voted down, so I respect that vote. And, you know, your experience in Damascus was quite unique, and I have a passion and understanding for the plight of the unincorporated areas and the rural areas that are often criticized for being unincorporated, right? How dare they this? But they don't know, people, most people don't know that the unincorporated areas pay 57 cents more per thousand than the incorporated areas. So it's not a subsidy like some of the cities claim.
Right, exactly.
So when you become elected, we inherit how our structure, right? We know our unincorporated areas are unincorporated, we know our rural areas are rural, we know that we wear many, many hats for districts, right, for all the districts we have. So the environment's set. So what are your thoughts with an experience of being a city councillor and a mayor in Damascus? What do you think, after all the millions of dollars that people in Damascus were taxed when it was a city, what is, what do you, what does Damascus have to show for that, for that money that they were taxed?
Nothing. Absolutely nothing. And part of that, too, is the naivety of us as citizens. Growth is incremental. You have to hook sewer pipes up to sewer pipes, you have to hook water pipes up to water pipes. You can't take an area that's next to Happy Valley, where these pipes are going to come from, and leapfrog over to the eastern portion of Damascus and start a sewer treatment plant where you can't put the effluent into the Clackamas River. We learned a lesson, and that is, A, probably don't trust what people tell you, which is kind of sad. But the message was delivered in such a way that it made us think that we could stop growth from happening. That's the message that we all came up with, is you get to be a city so you can put a wall up around Damascus and make sure nothing ever happens with it, right? That was the pie in the sky dream, and then come to find out that's absolutely not the case. You have to have a comp plan, you're mandated to grow, and yet, on $3.10 a thousand, it's going to take billions to grow a city and put in infrastructure. So it was an impossible mandate, is what it was. And that's why I said, if we want to keep throwing money at this, we can, but we're going to be doing it 20 years from now. And we will be in the same exact, and it has been almost, what, 10 years? And we, Happy Valley is slowly coming east, right? And that's the way it happens, and that's the way it should have happened from day one. So it was sad. The whole thing was just a sad time. But, yeah, would never want to live through that again.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, tell us about your experience with Wes and on that advisory committee a little bit, because it used to be very contentious between the various entities. And you seem to know a lot about infrastructure, because I know you're also on the Sunrise Water Authority as well. So tell us a little bit about your experience. How is that going? And how is that infrastructure? And we talk about roads a lot.
We do.
But how is that infrastructure being managed? Because if you can't flush your toilets, you're not going to have that, and you also need to have clean rivers, so.
Right. And Wes, I will say, when I started chairing the Advisory Committee for Wes, it was in a real tumultuous time. It was, it was tough. We went through a few growing pains. We made it through. Again, you have to listen to everybody and move on, right? This is, it was, we want to get to a place where we want to be sustainable. Greg Geis came in, and we were on a very good path. And I have to say, they were very fiscally responsible. They kind of got a war chest as far as growing their infrastructure and making sure they had a cushion for any type of, you know, emergency. And I was very involved in the budget part of it because we wanted to make sure we were not increasing rates to a degree where it was hurting everyone. It was just, we were very, very methodical about it. And they're sitting, Wes is doing great. They're doing great. They planned, they have a great CIP, they, totally spot-on. My time on the Sunrise Water Board, not so much. Their focus, the time I was there, was on their new building, and they needed a new building, rightly so. It was, it was, it was a lot. It was probably more than they needed for what they have. And I'm very, I'm very cognizant of how we spend our taxpayer dollars. And I, you know, I always made the reference to, we went from a Ford to a Rolls-Royce, and I didn't think that, that's a good optic for the citizens out there. I mean, can we, do we need a new building? Yeah, let's build a new building, but it doesn't have to be this grand. So one of my comments about the courthouse as well, but nobody's asked me about that. So, you know, again, you're spending taxpayer dollars on this. So do we need it? Yes, but let's be mindful of how we're spending our taxpayer dollars. So I'm concerned about the Sunrise our taxpayer dollars. So I, I'm concerned about the Sunrise Water Authority and that they have not done the CIP, the planning for their growth that I think Wes has been doing. So there's a concern there. And I, it needs to be addressed at some point, because when pipes stop, new growth stops out in Happy Valley. And there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of homes to be built out there. So, yeah.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner West.
Thank you. Really concerned about the housing crisis, even separately from how it impacts homelessness and whatnot, because it does. But also about, like, my child, as he begins to venture off as an adult, could never afford right now to buy a home in the community in which he was raised. That's heartbreaking to me. And we talked about this a little bit as parents, and I know we both have this concern. The region in Clackamas County is way behind in meeting the Governor Kotek's audacious goals that she set in her emergency order, around her emergency order two years ago. Currently, over by kind of Twalton 205, Borland is prime for development, for new housing. Do you, or do you not support developing new housing in Borland? And how else would you work to promote housing types of all kinds to meet the housing demand in Clackamas County? We know it's, we know that growth is slow, but it's real slow in Oregon, to the point now where we're in a housing crisis. Can you speak to that, please?
Number one, I do support the growth in Borland. They're shovel-ready. They have infrastructure that is right there. The unfunded mandates that are coming from the state level was, it's exactly what happened to Damascus. It was an unfunded mandate. Here's what you need to do, figure out how to do it. We don't have any money, you don't have any money. What are you going to do? Tax your citizens? You know, that's, it's, it's not a possibility. I think that any area that has infrastructure that's shovel-ready should be looked at as a prime place to start building. Our housing crisis is, I think, bigger than most people think. And I'm reading a great book right now on it. And it's, I think people need to be aware that the numbers we're seeing are not the numbers that are really out there. And it's not just our kids that can't afford a house. It's seniors who can't afford to live in their houses anymore. It's people who have two incomes and who can pay their mortgage, but then can't afford to pay any of their other bills or buy groceries. So I, and that disparity has to be addressed, I guess, at a deeper level. I mean, you have to get to the root problem, which is the price of dirt. Metro UGB, it's, it's bigger than that. And I would love to get my fingers in that, too, because I think if you can address that part of it, it's going to, it's going to create a wave and, and make it more affordable for everyone to build. The builders are frustrated, permit fees, the timing of permits, just the price of land, period. It's, it's just unattainable right now. So, but it's, it's not something Clackamas County can solve. But it's Clackamas County can solve it with the help of other counties going to Salem and saying, quit telling us to do stuff we're not able to do, you know?
All right. Thank you. And I, whoops, I think with the time, I'll go ahead and ask this last question, and that is, which kind of touched on with the courthouse and finances and the budget. The county really continues to face some financial realities, and some tough decisions need to be made regarding balancing our general fund budget. Do you have any ideas on increases to revenue or reductions to expenses that you might propose?
Not specifics, but I do, I did go over the budget, and I'm very proud of Clackamas County for staying in the black. I think it's one of the things you guys can be very, you know, proud of, that you have stayed flush. And it's, a lot of counties are not doing that right now, and a lot of cities are not doing that. I'm, I'm all about trimming the fat. And I'm all about line by line, where can we cut? Are there, not programs necessarily, not people necessarily, but are there places where we can give something up? And we have to be able to keep our budget in line. I think that is, A, number one important, that we are, we are staying in the black and continue to do so.
All right. Thank you very much. I think with the time now, that we'll conclude this. So we want you to know that you can stick around and listen for the other candidates, or you're obviously free to leave. But thank you so much. And
Thank you.
I think I'll turn it over to Gary for our last.
Yes, one last candidate.
Thank you very much.
Two seconds for transition.
Yeah, just had a request for just a short, five-minute recess. Will that work?
Sure.
Do we have time to use the rest?
Sure, yes.
Yes. We'll take a short five-minute recess.
Okay.
I will now reconvene our special meeting for Commissioner Position Four selection and interviews. And good morning, Mr. Ellis, Mayor Ellis, I should say, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners.
And we're going to kick it off by Gary Schmidt is going to ask you a couple of questions, and then we're going to transfer over, and each Commissioner is going to have a question for you. So Gary, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Chair. The Commissioners decided on these two questions. Question one, how would you advocate for the needs of both rural and urban residents, especially considering the unique challenges facing unincorporated areas?
Interesting question. I think you have to advocate for them fairly equally, even though they both have different challenges. I don't believe they should be one box fits all, so to speak, because they are different challenges. So I think you have to kind of separate and advocate fairly equally, but you try to put in there what the different challenges are. And so that would be my way of going about that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question two, tell us about when you had to compromise within a team to move a project forward. What did you learn from that experience?
I had to compromise at one time during an appointment process. I know that's not a project, but it was a compromise. Just like you, we had four people, and we had a four-by-four tie, excuse me, a tie. And it went two votes. And if we had not picked someone, that means the city would have went for another two years with only four councillors. And to me, that was not acceptable. So I changed my vote on the third vote, and we picked a councillor. I think either one of them would have done a good job, but I changed my vote so that the city could move forward with a full council.
Thank you. All right. So Commissioner Savis is going to ask our first question from the board.
Yeah. Thank you for being here today, Mayor. My question, do you support congestion pricing, and why?
I do not support congestion pricing. I do, I just don't think it's a fair system overall. I understand the, the reason, you know, during congestion time, you're trying to get less traffic, so you charge them more, or, or the same. The whole toll thing, so to speak, I just don't think is a fair system. And so congesting pricing is part of that, and I don't think it's a fair system. I don't think even ODOT says the money is, you know, most of the money, 60% will go to administration, and the rest will go to something else. To me, that's not, that's not a good deal for anybody.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, nice to see you, Tom.
Good to see you, Commissioner.
Always a pleasure, my friend. So I'm going to concentrate a little bit on workforce. It's a question, and just something I've been bringing up with every candidate today. And, you know, our workforce boards drive workforce innovation. In accounting, we manage training programs, we work with our community colleges. We have a system that's statewide and then local. Tell me what you know about our workforce system, and how would you help enhance it so people could get the training they need to get decent jobs to support themselves and their families?
Well, I think it's critical, in this day and age, that we have some sort of job training programs to get people out there to get a job. And, you know, there's nothing better than somebody gets a job and can support themselves. That's, if, if you give people the opportunity, succeed, normally they will. And so job training, job force training, as you're talking about, I think is a critical thing that we need to do. And I don't think we do enough of it. So I, I'm totally on board with whatever it takes to get people out there, to get trained up to whatever job they do. The other day, I went to the ribbon-cutting of the community thing over there the other day, driving through the industrial area, I must have seen 10 or 15 help wanted signs. And I keep thinking to myself, we need to be training people to go get those jobs, because obviously, those businesses need help.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner West.
Mayor, you currently preside over the fastest-growing city in the entire state. You have an extensive background in development and housing. There's some very unique growth that has happened in Happy Valley. However, it's become ever so difficult for middle-class families to afford a single-family home with yards big enough for their kids to play in. Our housing costs are much higher than comparably sized metro areas around the country, and yet, there has been little movement of metro-controlled urban growth boundaries, the most tangible means by which metro can increase the housing land supply and mitigate costs. As a Clackamas County Commissioner, would you support expanding housing land supply by expanding urban growth boundaries, and what has been the secret sauce of Happy Valley under your leadership?
I would, I would advocate for expanding the urban growth boundary. I, I think the more houses we can build, the prices will go down. Supply and demand is a well-known fact. And the more of you can build, the less the price of the land is going to be. It's hard to control the price of the actual structure. But the land is a critical part of building affordable housing, or workforce housing. So you, the more of it you can build, you know, I agree with the governor when, when she says, let's build more housing. I, I totally agree with that. We have been fortunate in Happy Valley that we have almost an unlimited supply of land inside the urban growth boundary. I mean, just two years ago, we approved our next comprehensive plan, which was 2,700 acres. Now, that land is buildable, but the problem is, right now, we don't have the infrastructure to go with it. We don't have the sewer, the water, the roads. If we had those features, you could build thousands of houses out there right now. And so getting that land in the urban growth boundary is the first step in building these units that need to be done. And if, so if you don't get it in the urban growth boundary, it's just going to sit there and look pretty.
All right. Thank you. So I have one on economic development. Clackamas County prioritizes business expansion, retention, and attraction. What proactive strategies will you implement to recruit businesses to Clackamas County?
Well, I think PR is a big one. You need to go after these businesses and tell them how wonderful we are. And that's how you get the ball rolling. And then I think you need some incentives to get them here, whether it be reduced permit costs, or STC costs, or whatever the case may be. I think you need to instill that on some of these businesses to get them here. I'm a very business-friendly person. I believe Happy Valley is very business-friendly, because they're, they're the cornerstone of our community, all these businesses. So if, whatever we can do to get them here and show them how great we are, that's what we need to do.
All right. Thank you. And we're going to start with Commissioner Savis again.
Yeah. Metro has made disproportionate investments in Portland at the detriment of Clackamas County. For example, service levels of transit service are grossly compromised in Clackamas, with over 200,000 people without any transit service. Would you support a new transit provider based in Clackamas County to serve unserved areas?
I would support that. As you know, Happy Valley, we deal with metro all the time, and they just don't want to give us any more buses or transit, it seems like. They just, they talk, 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 but we never get anything. So I think the, the time may have come for us to look into doing something like that on our own, and providing our own transit. So I would, I would be in full support of what we can do to get our own transit system going. I don't know exactly the details of what that would be, but if we can do that at a nominal price and, and a good ridership, then I think that should be done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. So this one is going to be workforce-related again, because that's my big thing. It has to do with childcare. Okay?
Okay.
So there you go, Tom.
All right.
You've had kids, so you know what it's like. But I guess my, the issue is, one of the things we are really wrestling with in this county is, we have a childcare desert. We don't have enough capacity. We don't have enough folks who are actually in the workforce system for it. And it's a huge issue, because it's one of the biggest barriers that parents are facing as they try to get a job, work at a job, and have that, you know, that satisfaction that they have appropriate childcare where it's safe. Any ideas of how we might increase capacity? How can we build more of a childcare system in this county to help our workforce?
Well, I think childcare is, is very important. If, if the parents can't get childcare, they can't go to work, unless they work from home. And so I, I think it's definitely a problem. I would be willing to look into even some subsidies from the county, if that's possible. I know, I'm not privy to your budget right now, but if there's some opportunity for some, some, for some subsidies to help out childcare centers, so you can put more in there, I would be 100% behind that. Because I do, I, I agree with you. I think it's very critical to increase the workforce by having childcare.
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner West.
Mayor, we've had a lot of conversations around the issue of homelessness, behavioral health crisis in the Portland metro area. You know, this is a passion of mine, and you've been a collaborative partner, even at times when we may disagree. And so I appreciate that. And we face this crisis, we've got to hit it head-on. So in Clackamas County, can you speak to the system that we use, and why it has outperformed the rest of the region, and particularly Multnomah County? And then how would you work with this board to ensure its continued success? And how have you done that in the past?
Well, I think the key to this, and we have had discussions about this, is, is treatment recovery is critical. We have to get these folks back to being productive members of society. And a lot of times, that's treatment, recovery, and then if they need job training to get them back out there, that's what we need to do. And so I've been a proponent for that for years, as I know you have been, and I think most of the Commissioners. It's very important to get these people back on, on solid footing and, and get them back out of, out there again. So I would be a big proponent. Again, treatment, recovery, job training, let's get them back to work. Because I think that's the, that's the thing that is going to solve, in the long run, our homeless problem. I really believe that. I mean, you look at Portland, they spend more and more money on the homeless situation, and now they have more than they've ever had. The state of California is the same way. The last count I heard was 26 billion on homelessness, and they have more now than they've ever had. So obviously, just throwing money at them is not working. You need to solve the problem. And in my estimation, that is treatment, recovery, job training, back to work.
Thank you. So I have a question. It has to do with, if you were so fortunate to receive $5 million as a county commissioner, and funding to be used for any purpose, how would you propose to spend it, and why?
Well, a pet project that has not happened, that I know of yet, would be low-income housing. We all know it's a problem. And the, and I'm going to use Happy Valley as an example. Land in Happy Valley right now is $300,000 to $500,000 per acre for undeveloped land. Then you build a house on it, now you're $600,000 to sell that house. That's not affordable. If you took that $5 million, bought the land, subsidized the land, is what I'm saying, then you found yourself a contractor to build whatever you, product you want on there, now you can immediately deduct, and lots right now are about $300,000 for a five-acre, for a 5,000-square-foot lot, you can immediately deduct $300,000 from the price of that house. So now you're down to $300,000 or $400,000 for a house. That's what I would do. I think that's a project that hasn't been looked at, that I know of, and I think it's something that should be looked at. Because to solve this problem, I see no other way than the state and counties, and even cities, are going to have to subsidize the land supply to a certain extent, because it is so expensive. And, you know, the average home, the average landowner, they're, you know, they're just normal people trying to make a living. They're not going to just give it away, just because they're nice guys today. So I think the subsidy of the land, and then building the houses, selling the houses or rent them, no matter which way you go, it's going to be almost half as much as it is for just a standard-rate house. And I, and I think that would be a, a good use of the taxpayers' money.
All right. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it back over to Commissioner Savis. And I'm going to turn it back over to Commissioner Savis.
Yes. If another turnkey opportunity presents itself where the county could save $2 to $3 million annually, would you support it if the property was indeed good condition?
Sure. I would. I testified before the commission back when the Quality Inn was going on. And just to refresh everybody's memory on Project Turnkey, the first words out of my mouth, and I'm sure you can look it up in your records, were, "I'm not opposed to Project Turnkey." And I'm not. I'm supportive of anything that will work. I also have a letter that I brought that I wrote to Oregon Community Foundation in full support of Project Turnkey. Again, I am supportive of whatever works. And I have not seen all the facts and figures on Project Turnkey, but I have not heard anything negative either, so I'm assuming it must be working.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Schrader.
So the other thing that we deal with in this county is urban, rural, suburban, and wild. Okay? That's kind of our theme here. And each area of this county, it's very diverse, it has different ideologies, different cultures. I mean, I've got rural is different than urban. I've had the opportunity to have my life significantly in both rural and urban. How would you resolve the tensions and the differences of opinions that we have to grapple with, dealing with the whole diverse county that we have here? Which makes it very interesting, I might say, too.
Wow, that's a pretty hard question.
Yeah.
Everybody has their own opinions, as we know.
Oh, yeah.
So I think the, you know, the old standard, you need to meet with people and talk to them and find out what their issues are on all sides. Try to bring those people together and solve the problem. I don't believe anymore, and these days, we seem to talk about things enough, no matter what side of the aisle you are. We need to talk about this and figure out what the problem is and fix it. That's the bottom line. So I understand what you're saying. The rural is not happy sometimes with the arrest of it because they figure they're not getting their due as far as what their taxes are paying for, and then other people figure they're paying too much. So I understand that. So whether you're ever going to totally solve the problem, I don't know, but I think you've got to give it a good shot. And you're never going to solve a problem unless you get people talking.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner West.
Mayor, we've all seen this recently in the news, and it is concerning that the Portland metro area is in an economic doom loop. Hey, it sounds quite ominous, but that is an academic term. We are also just received an economic forecast report that the state is going to face significant headwinds. And please be candid, this is, you know, unfortunately, a tough reality that we're facing. Mayor, why are we here? How does this impact Clackamas County? And what do you think we need to do to protect the economic resiliency of Clackamas County?
Well, another tough one. I think budget planning is huge nowadays. I mean, it's just huge. And sometimes you have to make the tough calls. You really do, or you're not going to survive. I think Portland, and I don't mean to disparage them, but I think sometimes they have not done a good job of doing what is necessary to keep their budget in line. They just seem to spend, 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 and that's not going to work for anybody. So I think the budgeting process is just huge. I know Happy Valley is a small segment of that, but we have surpluses every year. We've done a good job of just holding the line, just because we have to. And I believe the county is no different than anyone else. When it comes to budget cycle here pretty soon, we're going to have to make the tough choices, and that's what you have to do. I mean, it's no different than your personal budget. You just can't go out and spend willy-nilly on this and that and then wonder all of a sudden where your money's at. So it's, to me, it's not simple. You have to weigh what has to be done and what doesn't have to be done, and it's tough choices. And I think it's, sometimes it's hard to make those tough choices, but that's what we're here for.
All right. Thank you. So I have a transportation-infrastructure kind of question. What do you have, or what ideas do you have to create public-private partnerships to increase accessibility and affordable transportation throughout the county? So any ideas you have on that?
That's a really good question. You know, the problem is, the private sector really doesn't want to build roads. I mean, they will if you give them the money to do it, but then they don't want to be part-owner of it. So that's kind of a tough question. I know there are places in the country where they have a transit fee, where they charge everybody, and that pays for the roads to get done, and that's kind of a private partnership, but not really. But that's a tough one when it comes to transportation because the private sector, as we all know, need to make a profit. And if they get involved in something that's not going to make a profit, they're very reluctant to do that. So that's a good question on how that could be done. I'm sure there's ways to do it. I've done some studies around the country on how, especially with roads, on how they've done that, and there are different scenarios around the country that have done that. I mean, you know, here in Oregon, you see a big tract of land go in, and they're building a subdivision, and usually the road's not there until they're right ready to build. There's other parts of the country where they build the roads sometimes years ahead of time, and then the developers go in there. And I think that if you can get that to work, that works pretty well. Right now, we are partnering with Clackamas County to improve 172nd Avenue, and that's what we're doing there. We are going to improve that road before all the development comes in. And when I proposed that, I talked to a lot of the developers, they were thrilled because they don't want to build roads. They were like, "Yeah, you build a road, we'll come in there, we'll pay your expenses back, and then we can build what we need to build. We don't want to build the roads." So I think that's an option.
Great. Thank you. I think we have time to do another round, if it's all right with you, my colleagues here. So I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah. As it relates to transportation challenges, how should Clackamas deal with metro's pattern of marginally investing in Clackamas County?
Oh, metro. Somehow, they have to be convinced that we're on the map and we need the infrastructure. I don't really totally understand, you are involved in it more than I am, what their reluctance is. Clackamas County is a huge part of this state, and why they would be reluctant to spend their dollars out here is a little baffling to me, to be honest with you. Because I think Clackamas County has the capacity to grow and be a great place, it already is, but to grow and do what we need, more jobs and transportation and everything, and they always seem a little reluctant. And it goes back to, kind of like metro, when they tell you they're going to put a bus in, but they never do. And that's, maybe that's not a solution to your question, but it is a good question because they just don't seem to want to. Listen, I don't know if you could get the governor involved or somebody involved to put a little pressure on them to get them to move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah. Tom, speaking of metro, what are your thoughts on this notion that metro is discussing? I know Commissioner West is very involved in it of pushing out the SHS tax, you know, in other words, changing the framework that we kind of thought we were going to be keeping for 10 years. Just kind of curious about that.
I'm not in favor. I don't think they've shown that they've done everything they need to do with that money. Yet here, they come back and now they want to make it perpetual, I think. They want to make it go on forever. And until they prove to us that they are using that money wisely, I am very reluctant to give them more. Now, if all of a sudden, the homeless population goes away because they've done everything right and they've used the money wisely, then maybe so. But at this point in time, no, I am not in favor of extending that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me, Commissioner West.
I'm going to totally go off script.
Okay.
Talking about something that I am quite passionate about. Commissioner Schrader brings up an important point. We had 10 years to solve this problem. Clearly, Clackamas County is doing what we were tasked to do, even though we don't love writing that check, but we're being very good stewards of that money. The well has been somewhat poisoned because of the performance out of Multnomah County and Portland, perception-wise about what's going on. But in Clackamas, we're building recovery campuses, continuing systems of care, the whole thing, right? And we find little disagreements here or there about our systems of care, but we've done the job as local leaders. You were part of that, all of us in here have been, most of the applicants today have been. Let's say SHS doesn't get renewed and it doesn't, after 10 years, and we lose that funding after building our system that did not exist. We had nothing in Clackamas, but we built a really great system. Would you support finding a way to go to just Clackamas County voters to get the funding necessary to continue to do the work that we've proven we can do? And how are some ways that maybe you think we could earn the trust of Clackamas County voters again if we had to do that? Saying SHS hypothetically is, we weren't able to fix or save it.
No.
I mean, I can say I could support it, and I probably would. However, we have 10 years to try to fix a lot of this problem. And I go back to treatment, recovery, job training. The more of that you can do, the less of the SHS-type money we are going to need. Because those people are now productive members of society. They have a job. They're paying for themselves. So we, yes, Clackamas County has done a good job so far with the money they've gotten. I'm hoping in the next 10 years, we can use what money we get and really go after this and make it better. And in 10 years, we may not need that money. But if we do, then I would be supportive of it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. My question's directed more kind of at budget and finance, and I know I saw you at the opening of the new courthouse, and it is a very nice building. And with that being said, the county really continues to face some financial realities and tough decisions will be need to be made regarding balancing the general fund budget. We have an ongoing debt service due on that building. Do you have any ideas on what increases to revenue or reductions in expenses that you might propose to make sure we're meeting that balanced budget?
Well, it's a difficult question because I don't have privy to your budget at this point, so I can't look at your budget and go, "Well, let's cut this," or "Let's increase that," or anything. But obviously, I believe you have a $15 million payment on that every year for the next 20 years, I believe. That's a lot of money. It's going to have to come from somewhere. So without being in the budget cycle, so to speak, and with you in there, I don't think I could really recommend something because I don't know exactly what to recommend. But again, we get back to the hard choices. Whether we like the building or not, and it's a beautiful building, no doubt about it, we have to pay for it. That's in place. It's there. It needs $15 million a year, so somehow, we have to figure out a way to pay for that. I'm not a big fan of raising fees and taxes on something like that, but if that's the has to be, then that's what has to be. But I would rather look inside first to try to find out where we're going to get the money to pay for this.
Great. Thank you. And with the time, Gary, recommendations.
You have 13 minutes, you could do one more round.
I've been answering the questions too fast.
You're getting a lot more questions here.
Actually, I appreciate that, actually.
Yeah, we get to the next one.
So like my colleague, Commissioner West here, I too am very passionate about the plight we're in, austerity, more austere than prosperity for a lot of folks. And so, as has been described to me, the silver tsunami, and that is the growth of the people becoming homeless are older. And it's the number-one leading population going into homelessness, at least from the numbers we've seen recently. And it's economics that are driving people out of their homes, whether it's the cost of living or whatever it may be. Even if they own their own home, you know, they can't pay their taxes, or they can't food, all of that. So knowing there's seven years left on this measure, and go back to the measure, there's seven years of that 10-year measure on there, I'm concerned for all the people that were providing those funds, at least in Clackamas I can speak to, that are housing people, lots of people right now, or keeping people in their homes. If that money goes away, there's going to be a sudden increase of people on the street. And unfortunately, those are our senior citizens. So in light of all of that, that information, do you feel as though it's appropriate for metro to consider reducing the amount? Or to your point, if they're not, if we're not proving themselves that we just don't renew it altogether? And then what do we do with that homeless population?
Well, again, as I mentioned, we have 10 years, or seven years, as you say, to try to make the problem better. Now, if in 10 years, we can't, for whatever reason, and I agree with you, even if you own your home outright nowadays, you have a pretty big tax bill to pay on that every year. And if, for retired folks, that can be a big problem. You know, there are some states, cities that exempt older folks from their property taxes when they're above 65 or whatever number you want to pick. I'm not opposed to that. The problem with that is then you lose that revenue, and then you get into a catch-22, like, I think like you're talking about. I don't want to see that money go away. On the other hand, if it's not being spent wisely, then we should not be paying, our taxpayers should not be paying that money. So I think part of our job is to advocate to metro that this is what you need to do to make this problem better. But I don't want to see anybody put out of their house. I think everybody, regardless of income, should have a place to live. I mean, that's just a given as far as I'm concerned. And so I hope that we can put programs together that get more people working and supplying their own income. That's, I think that's the bottom line in all this. We can't subsidize folks forever. We have to do what we can to get them back in the workforce.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Well, actually, Tom, I don't have any other questions for you. I know you very well, and you're a wonderful person.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Really?
So. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off.
No, I am, I'm okay.
I'll go ahead to move to Commissioner West.
I have one.
I kind of figured you would.
So Mayor, you, once again, have been uniquely positioned to lead one of the most significant cities, not just in the county, but the region, the fastest-growing city in the state. A lot of prosperity has come to Happy Valley. It's happy for many. What is some key successes that you and your council have achieved that you're proud of, that you guys like, like you hang your hat on? What are some significant challenges that you wish you were able to break through on but weren't able to get those things done? Kind of answer kind of both ends of that question for me.
Well, as I'm sure all of you know, there's a lot of good things going on in Happy Valley right now. I mean, we're getting ready to break around in a community center. We've purchased property for a future downtown, which is something that cities don't normally do. But for years, people have saying, have said to us, "Happy Valley really does not have a downtown district." So we purchased the land, and we're going to find a developer to do it. And by doing that, like I said, sometimes you have to think outside the box, that gives us leverage to get that built the way we want it. We're getting ready to design a new public works. We've already purchased the land for that, so that's coming. And these are all things that people that live or work and move to our city, they expect. They expect us to provide a community center and a good public works, and maybe a downtown district, and good roads and streets. Those are just things people want. And so I think we've done a really good job of doing that. As far as the negative things, I really have to think about that because just about everything that the council has wanted to do has come to fruition, and I'm really proud of that. So I guess my, the biggest negative that we haven't been able to get through so far, and Commissioner Savis will probably echo this, is the Sunrise Corridor. It's just absolutely critical to Happy Valley and East County to get that in. I know, so were you in Amerisform, I was at, and I said, "If that doesn't get built, all that industrial land we have out there, the only thing that's going to grow is grass because you have to have that transportation system." And I think Commissioner Savis and the team on that, you guys have done a great job moving that forward, probably better than, you know, I've been looking at that for over 20 years now. And they've got it to move forward more than I think anybody else has, and that's absolutely critical. And so that would probably be the only negative that hasn't, it's not under And so that would probably be the only negative that, that hasn't, it's not under construction or done. That's a little disappointing to me.
So that has given me an idea for one last question. Okay. So as you said, I think one of the issues is since you're the highest growth area that we have. And there is an industrial land, you know, deficit. And it's always been a bit of pushback with Metro because it, we don't have enough. You would be one of our prime areas. So what, what have your economic development folks thought about in terms of what sectors? And what kinds of business do you want to bring to your area? Because you're high growth and you're really our chance for, you know, industrial expansion, I think, in many ways.
Well, I think we're.
Or trade sector, whatever.
We're open to just about anything, other than maybe heavy factories or something like that, obviously. You're not going to put in a residential area. But pretty much anything else, warehouses, you know, small manufacturing, things like that. We're pretty open to anything that we think fits in our part of the county. And we have a lot of open land that is just sitting there that a lot of those things would, would work. We have a small food and processing plant right now that is great. I mean, they're clean, they don't cause any problems, they're not loud, they don't put a lot of pollution out. You can't ask for anything better than that. So those kind of things, I think, is what we would be looking for. I think the large factory setting is pretty much out for most people.
Yeah, it'd probably be small manufacturing, something that is more, depending on the acreage size, you know.
Yeah. And we're willing to work with anybody. You know, we've had, we've had people come to us asking our opinion on stuff. We had a large warehouse, people come and I don't think I have ever told anybody, but I said, a long time ago, we even had a major league baseball park want to talk to us.
So if I could just kind of close maybe with one question, which really kind of builds on a lot of the questions my colleagues have asked. What would be your approach in preserving farmland while also creating development opportunities and jobs throughout the county? You know, we have a lot of farmland and east of the city of Happy Valley, there's a lot of farmland and nurseries. So what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I think farmland is critical if it really is farmland. I mean, we all see a lot of land out there, sitting there doing nothing. So it's hard to consider that farmland if nothing's growing there. And if it was true farmland, I think the farmers would be using it for that. So if it's not true farmland, then I don't, I think development is, has to be an option. I mean, people need a place to live, you know, and so I, I think that's an option. I've thought about that in, in the past because I, I know people that live out and their, you know, their land, you have to have 80 acres or something like that to, to build a house. And I've always thought, what if the land that cannot be farmed, if it could be broken into smaller parcels in certain circumstances? Not saying everywhere. But I think there are options that that could be done in certain areas and you would increase the housing stock. And, and rather than seeing it sitting there doing nothing, I, I would, I would be on board with that, under circumstance. I mean, we can't just go willy-nilly all over the place. But I think in certain circumstances, some of that could be done.
All right. Well, thank you. I think this will conclude our interview then. And obviously, you can stick around. We're going to take a recess. So I'm going to do that, I want to say thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time and being here. And I'm going to turn it back over to Gary here for a moment.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So that has concluded the interviews. You will now have a short lunch break. I propose 30 minutes, if that is acceptable. I'm hearing some nods. So I said, just time to move, I would say you reconvene at 12:05 PM. Back here for deliberations.
Okay.
The board will now recess this special meeting and reconvene to deliberate at 12:05. Welcome back, everyone. And before we begin our deliberations, just would like to thank all of you for your patience throughout this process. And I know it's been a lengthy one and people have put an incredible amount of time in the application of the process, so thank you. So I think before really going into deliberations, as far as talking about the candidates, I, I thought I'd go ahead and reflect kind of my thoughts and really, this is, I know my colleagues, we've all spent a lot of time going over the resumes, actually even doing some online research and looking at a number of issues. So kind of where I'm at today, excuse me, after really vetting all the five applicants and carefully listening to each of you today, you know, for position for my top candidate is Christine Lewis. I think she brings the most comprehensive experience, full-time, strong background in an elected office and community service. Really, she has a breadth of experience that spans rural and urban. And really, a deep understanding of how local, state and community partners intersect and kind of shape policies. She's also got to that vast budget experience and also a proven track record. I know I've seen her personally stand up and support Clackamas County on some of the metro issues, serves on numerous boards. And I think one of the things that kind of surprised me as I was doing some research really is, for example, she serves on the Board of Institute of Metropolitan Studies at Portland State University. Honestly, I was trying to understand what that is. It's a group committed to understanding the key issues affecting the six-county Portland-Vancouver metropolitan area. And with her really depth of knowledge, I, I do believe she would be a valuable asset, particularly in policymaking, building community, strong community partnerships. And then notably, kind of looking at, she did earn the most votes from Clackamas County residents in some of the past elections. So it, each applicant, I want to just say, brought four very unique talents in many different ways. This was not actually an easy decision, but I thought I'd now go to Senior Commissioner Schrader and let her go ahead and share her thoughts on her top selection and then we'll move down the role.
Well, at this point, this is actually one of the more difficult decisions I've had to make because I think all of you, not only have I been here long enough, I know all of you personally for a long time, and any one of you could do this job. I think Christine, you did do a brilliant job. At this point, however, and I want to, and so Diana, you're a friend, Tom, you know, I love you, man, and Jackie. But I'm, at this point, I love the fact that you're advocating for is it Metro. And I would, I, I think your qualifications are stellar. But I would rather have you continue to be there for us because you have advocated for the sake of this county in a way that nobody ever has done before. And one of the comments you made this time that made a big impression on me was how you push back with your own colleagues. So we could take some of that SHS money to put in here. Jackie, great from, from being on the, you know, the council with Jeff. Diana, businesswoman. Tom, businessman. But at this point, who I really, who I really feel, I think Jeff, you knocked it out of the park for me. And the reason why I felt, or think that, that, that your expertise because of your economic background would be so important right now in this county with what we've been facing with budget issues. We are, we are the only, in my mind, county right now that's in the black. The hard part for me with this decision is I love all of you and it's like coo-picking your favorites, like Sophie's Choice with, I have to go through this. But Tom, you're a man of Happy Valley in a way that you're like our growth engine. Diana, you're a small businesswoman and a, and a close friend and love you and, but I'm going to, right now, I'm, I'm actually going towards Jeff. I really do feel that way, so.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Okay. I thought we would deliberate first, but I, maybe I will actually really just do that. So I'm going to take my time and just really talk about a number of things, beginning with this process about narrowing the candidates. And I think I was very deliberate in my thinking then about concerns about geography and experiences. And my experience, whether it was seeing the homeless crisis unfold in Oak Grove area 10 years ago, actually prior to that actually, to some degree, or other areas where the county has been disadvantaged. And when I start, my public involvement started 20, over 25 years ago. And I went around the county, you know, talking to other people in the county for years, CPOs and, you know, whatnot, about a number of issues that were going on. I was just totally interested in the county and never, you know, as I always said back then, I, I would never, ever want to be a county commissioner. And here I am. And I also said, you know, darn those county commissioners, they don't this or they don't that, they don't listen to us. And I was coming from my heart and my, and my background of living unincorporated is that the unincorporated areas have so little voice in this county. The cities have had a tremendous amount of influence, as does other governments, the state, our state legislators, Metro and others. And it has really been to the detriment, frankly, I think, of a lot of our opportunities that we could have had. There's urban unincorporated. I was stated earlier that if Oak Grove incorporated, it'd be the largest, or that unincorporated area right there would be the largest unincorporated, largest city in the, in the county, it would be. So I, I come from that. Also, being that with my background around the county, rural, urban, everywhere, is that I kind of understand the Clackamas values and, and geography is a big thing. So when we narrowed down to five, my geographic picks were east of the Latimer River and I'm, I'm still inclined there. And to some degree, that core part of me unincorporated still is a, a, a big factor. So, you know, and I also mentioned in that time is that this particular seat, seat four has had some instability over the years. You know, it's, it's kind of swayed this way and it's kind of swayed that way and whatever, however you want to view it. So I'm hoping, and in aspect of stability, even the chair's race, we haven't had one elected chair get reelected. And that's more of a governance thing. I think that's something we need to ponder. But this seat also has had a lot of instability. So it's, it's never really been, there's not been a consistent person there that's been reelected. So I agree with Commissioner Schrader's comments. Christine, you are a total asset to Clackamas County as a metro counselor. I've said that, I mean that. I am, I actually think that your seat as a metro counselor is more important than this new seat because of your role. You have, you are by far, in my opinion, the best metro counselor representing Clackamas County we've ever had. And I, I see so much value in that. I, I'm really nervous about if we vacate your seat, right, what that would create. So I just want to give you my highest esteem and, and respect for what you bring. And I appreciate your partnership. We don't always agree, but I appreciate that partnership and I, I think that's extremely valuable. But again, my, my heart and my, my thinking and understanding the values of Clackamas, and I know that's hard to put a finger on, but we have the largest unincorporated population in the state of Oregon. Over 200,000 people are unincorporated, whether that's rural or urban. So, you know, having some help in that regard would be a value. And, and so when I look at that, just from that lens of unincorporated, there's only one candidate in this room that fits that and that'd be Diana Helm. Mayor Ellis, you've done a fabulous job for the city of Happy Valley. And that too would create an opening that I would be kind of concerned about. Not necessarily maybe who would succeed you as mayor, so much as it would create a vacancy that would ultimately inevitably fill in one seat or another. So those are my thoughts. I haven't, you know, I, I, I don't know where we're, we need, I would hope we get four votes here today to, to close this out. But I too want to just say, I said earlier, but I've never seen of the 59, so many qualified people with so many qualifications and, and, you know, we could, we had to narrow it to five. But I, I'm impressed. Of all the times I've done this, it was twice now, I, I haven't really seen a slate of candidates of the 59 that was, had so many people that were just, had a lot of tremendous experience. So to all those people, thank you for applying and thank you all for the five. But that, that's kind of my thinking right now. But I certainly want to hear from my colleagues before I settle in one way or another on a, on a vote or a motion.
And I agree with you, Paul. It's the best set of candidates we've had in a long time. Everybody's dedicated to this county.
Commissioner West.
Thank you, Chair. The five of you, thank you for loving Clackamas County. And this has been an unfortunate reason why we're here, but here we are doing our jobs to still advocate for our neighbors and our community. Some of you are my friends, some of you I've gotten to know better through this process. And you guys are all just like absolutely stand-up members and Clackamas County would be fortunate to have any five of you. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're a nonpartisan board and we just have to solve problems. Sometimes problems that partisan people create, but we're all neighbors. And I feel like with many of you, I can break bread and I have. With many of you, I care about your families, I care about your, working with you as leaders moving forward. And so, you know, in these processes and what we've had to go through, that's not always common. And it, it really heartens me that the Clackamas County's future and the leadership that is here serving the community is absolutely stellar. And so that is one great thing, at least, well, five great things that have come out of this process. So thank you so much to the five of you. I'm, I'm like still in total deliberation mode. You all have not made this easy, which was your job to do? Right? Like, and, and like, I, I don't know, somebody said it earlier, as, as leaders, you know, you're, you're going to make somebody upset. But please, please know my heart is ultimately what I think is best for the stability and the security and the balance and not just Clackamas County, but I think Clackamas County is a microcosm of the entire state. We have such large rural populations, urban, suburban, we're kind of a bellw, we're not kind of, we are a bellwether county politically. And right now, I would, I wouldn't want to live in any other county in the region. And people are also having that same sentiment. They want to call Clackamas home. And it's how y'all have led, how this board has led and how we've made specific policy decisions. Christine, I met you at a Thanksgiving event in the summertime, it was weird, I know. But it's a thing we do. And, you know, I, I love your family and I love your children and your husband's here in the audience and is a great man and you're a great man and advocate in the community. Good luck in your race, sir, also for school board. You guys are all about public service. You are whip-smart. You're one of the smartest people I've ever worked with. I wish I had your gifting of, of IQ and intelligence, but thank you for challenging me as an elected. And we haven't always agreed and we maybe had a little disagreement today. No surprise. And it won't be the first or last time that happens. But you are a fantastic counselor, true. And I think you have every right to put your hat in the ring for this job also, if you feel like that's where you could be of best service. And so thank you for that. You haven't made this decision easy. Jeff, you had a stellar interview. Stellar, concise, policy-smart, you know these issues. You may have not have held the most elected office out of all five candidates, but you wouldn't know it by your interview, you were ready. And I really appreciate the conciseness and the detail on which you offered your thoughts. I'm, I can't believe how surprised I am, but I'm not really because I've known you for a little while. Just look at your resume. You don't get that resume by not being plugged in and well-studied, so thank you for that effort. Diana Helm, thank you for being a business advocate, a business owner, talking about those today that sign the front of the paycheck, not just the back. I got the sense that you're tired of the state treating you like a piggy bank without allowing you to have the ability to also have your family succeed and prosper also. Fantastic job. Ms. Manns, thank you so much for your advocacy around tourism, development, your work on the city council, putting yourself out there in a way that I think could offer a lot of benefit to the county and being honest with your answers. It was very authentic and I appreciate that. Mayor Ellis, you are term-lim, you're about to be term-limited. So we don't know how your seat will eventually totally be filled, but the electorate's going to have to have to decide soon based on your city statutes. You can't be as successful as Happy Valley in that many news articles and that much kind of growth and that kind of like hub of economic development and housing in the Portland area without being, without good local leadership. Your board is diverse in its opinions and has been. Your city is quite diverse in its opinions and political makeup. And still, your predecessor, Secretary Lori Chavez Dreamer, and yourself have been fantastic leaders. You've been great on labor, you've been great on housing and development, you've been balanced in your, in your approach in business. You have much more extensive public service than just being the mayor of Happy Valley. I, your, your success is, is just look at what we've done, just look at the outcomes of what we produced. And I, and I am really proud of your leadership in Happy Valley and your collaboration often with this county. We've had many deep debates. One of them was the, was the, one of the recent ones with the, the council, your counseling yourself was Project Turnkey, the Quality Inn. I, I, I know that your city absolutely did support that, building this infrastructure, just not that specific location. And you were principled in that decision, but then you also just approved our recovery campus, which is in your UGMA also, which is a much more holistic approach dealing with the homelessness crisis than dealing with, than, than maybe Project Turnkey was. So thank you to all of you. So my, I'm, I'm kind of at a three, I guess. God, it's so hard. My top three in no particular order are Counselor Lewis, Mayor Ellis. And this tiebreaker for me is purely geographic. It's, it's Mayor Diana Helm in unincorporated Clackamas County. Jeff, I mean, friend. This is, that is, I might kick myself right after this, but y'all did a fantastic job. But those, those are my top three as we deliberate. I'm not really ready for a motion. But once again, you guys with deep heartfelt like gratitude, thank you for stepping up in this long process and helping stabilize this county and move it forward. Thank you for your leadership.
So colleagues, if I could, if you wouldn't mind, if we just kind of continue to rotate through, if that'd be all right? So, because I know Commissioner Savis has a comment and I think you do too.
Yeah, okay.
So if that's all right with my colleagues here. So I think that it is not easy sitting up here, I'll just say that right now, because there is incredible talent. And I, I, I come back to one and I'm just going to reiterate kind of what I've said too, is just that number, other things that I look at is, we received about 49 emails or letters of support, there are six mayors that stand behind Christine Lewis. I think she's, will term out too, is my understanding. So, one more term. And so while she is doing an amazing job for us representing us at Metro, I also hate to be, have that be a negative against her, really. I mean, and I think she could really step up and do that same thing here. I think her breadth of knowledge, really, I keep saying that, it's just like, and prior to this, I have called her on industrial land development issues and I've honestly been surprised really at, you know, the amount of knowledge that she has on a number of issues that has personally helped me. And so anyway, I'm going to stop there. I've said a few points, I want to turn it to Martha and just work down the line, if that's all right.
So colleagues, it seems we're going to have to do a lot of what we talked about today, which is a compromise. So how should we do that? How should we deliberate? Well, we have folks in front of us, every one of them is competent to do this job. And I am understanding you colleagues are both behind Diana. Is that what I heard? My friend Diana?
I don't know what, I mean, I've said that publicly just now openly, but I think we're, I think I'm the only one that's said it so far.
Is that, so how, how should we compromise with this, with each of us having a different?
Well, I think maybe perhaps just if you could just kind of talk about, kind of maybe more how you got to your conclusion on that and that might help persuade one of us.
Okay.
Different kind of mindset about that.
I, I think the reason I got to Jeff was, was mostly because as I said, with Christine, who's lovely and about one of the most talented people I've ever had the privilege to work with. Right now I think her, I think her position at Metro is going to be essential for us. And I do think that Christine, I hope you have a, a long political future ahead of you. And, and, and I will be there every step of the way as a friend and to, to make sure that if that's what you choose there, but boy, we need you, we need you there. The reason I liked Jeff so much is because I know the financial precipice that we're facing. Potentially we have not because we have an administrator who has managed a budget in a way that has kept us solvent. I like to think we've had some hand in that, gentlemen. But I do want to give credit where credit is due. And for me, the, the economic background, I think, is what really moved me and the ability to compromise. You know, Tom I love because he's, he's been a great mayor for the fastest growing city, you know, so how can you say no to that? Jackie, as I said, is the tourism guru, all right? We all know that. And Diane is probably been one of the best advocates, as you said, for the unincorporated area that we've ever had in terms of facing an extremely difficult situation out in Damascus and having to oversee the demise of a city that I was on the bottom floor when that happened and that we all thought might succeed and it, it, it just didn't. So this is where we are with deliberation. Is there any other deliberation that we need to have or would you like, or should we talk about a, you know, how we can get to a three or a four, hopefully?
Our lights are on. Yeah, so I'm going to go to Commissioner Savis next.
Yeah, I, I realized when I turned my light on a bit ago that I had forgotten to say a couple of things and so. So one, the one thing I want to say is a former Counselor Mans and I worked together, I think Christine you did too, on the Oglo Bridge. And I, I was, which was a foot, going to be a foot bridge, bike pad foot bridge over the Lamont from Oak Grove to Lake Oswego. And I was pumped about it. I think actually Mr. Goodman also was in the conversation, but not at the table at the time. And everything I thought was going swimmingly up until, you know, someone from above introduced the concept of, oh, let's pass on that and kind of make it more of a bus and bike pad bridge, which ultimately killed it. Took a very sensitive issue going through neighborhoods, most especially on the Oak Grove side because it is heavily residential and somehow making that a bus corridor of sorts really killed it. So Counselor Mans, thank you for your understanding and you did a great job representing Lake Oswego. I just wanted to give you a shout out for that. I still want to see that bridge happen as a bike pad foot bridge, but hopefully we can carry that on. I challenged myself since the time we selected the five candidates. I challenged my own thinking with regards to this geography and people had called me and said, well, you know, you know, don't get stuck on geography. So I was, you know, thinking, well, and, you know, I'm, I'm still flexible here today, but, you know, I'm less flexible as a result and I challenged my colleague last week after, Martha, you were gone, but on two, last Tuesday, we had an issue about the bike pad plan and Chair, Chair Roberts from Wilsonville and my colleague Ben West from Wilsonville were arguing the move of Wilsonville project from one tier to another tier, right? And, and frankly, to, to the detriment of obviously the rest of the county. And have I seen this movie before? I've seen this movie for 25 years. As I said earlier about the city influence is so strong. We've had a history of probably more, more county commissioners from Wilsonville and Lake Oswego than anywhere before. That's not a hit. Jeff, you need to move to East County. But, you know, so, so that, you know, it kind of rang home again. See, look, I mean, there was, it was really there, but those, those are the things I, I really want to say. And I, again, the county, because of that huge population, because of this, you know, not having the political influence, having one more voice on here on the commission from somewhere unincorporated on the east side and only one candidate in the room fitting that model and that, not that, not the only reason. I, I think Mayor Helm and Counselor Helm, I was there through a lot of those, I went to a lot of those meetings and I want to say you, and you did represent the voters ultimately, that's what you did. But the hell that that community went through and the fact that millions of dollars were being taxed in that area and, and got nothing for it, as you, as you, you know, confirmed with us this morning, nothing for it. And the hell you went through and the backbone that you showed. I, I just admired you then. We don't always agree on stuff, but I, I admired you for that. I admire you that for, that today. So all of you have done significant, great work and, and really held the line and did what you can. So that's why it's really, really tough. But I, I can tell you that on, what I hear often, and maybe the only reason I get reelected is because of one of the few people from unincorporated, I mean, I'm not the only one in history, clearly, and even recently, but, but I've done my best to try to represent that group and be all around the county as best I can. But I'm been a fighter for, for the little guy and the little guy unfortunately has been the, the most politically or has the least political influence and that's our population. So colleagues, I'm, I'm trying to represent that, that little, that smaller voice today.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
I think, I think I already did.
I don't, I, I'm not quite sure if, I don't know. I have two questions for my colleagues because we have to pare this down. I'm willing to find compromise here. I think one of you leaders already said, Mayor Ellis, you were at three rounds and you had to make a compromise to make it happen for the good of, of Clackamas County. That might have to happen. And by the way, this is not exactly going how I thought it would. So I'm like, here we are. I talk a lot about the individual and the intangibles they bring, merit-based. And that's, you can have, sometimes just defining somebody as they just happen to be in a certain geography or they happen to be, have some immutable trait or they happen. I think that sometimes you forget that very special talent that's in the individual that could do great by the county. And I'm going to be honest, all the interviews were great. Jeff, you stood out. You were just so, you stood out. And so I'm willing to compromise with Jeff even because I, that's the only current name I hear commonality at all. I, and I also could completely compromise with Mayor Helm. And, and that's where the board is going. I haven't heard another name from Chair Roberts. I've heard mostly Commissioner Schrader. I'm trying to find that common ground with where we're at. I'm not quite sure, Commissioner Savis, where you're leaning. And maybe it's Mayor Ellis and Diana Helm, I don't want to put their team out, but they're in that side of the county based on geography. Mayor Helm is the one that's unincorporated in that area, so maybe that's where you're leaning. That's where I'm at now unless somebody else has another name they want to offer. I'm willing, because I'm hearing your name by more than one commissioner more than once, Mr. Goodman, that I'd be willing to make that compromise because I, you should be rewarded for the interview you gave and your depth of knowledge. So that's, you, you would have just earned that. Listen, like, I'm a little shocked with how this is all kind of playing out, but I am willing to go down that pathway, just based on earned, earning it in the interview. And that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, I think that, again, I'll keep saying this, this is difficult. And where I'm at kind of, again, kind of looking at what is, what is, what is critically facing our county, right? What are the biggest issues? And I think we're in alignment on this, is it's addiction, it's mental illness, it's homelessness, it's affordable housing, you know, and those are all big challenges, right? And I know a lot of the candidates all have specific background in finances. I see a lot of unity on some of those things. And, and that's why I, I really do come back to Christine. I mean, as a consultant, I mean, organizational development, strategic communication, deliverables for clients engaged in public health, community development, social change work, and all of these areas, really coordinated care organizations. And right now we are facing, how do we bring this continuum of healthcare to address this? We're, we're still in the stages of identifying what that is. And I, I, I think that within that, and she's also had an amazing background in policy director for housing, homelessness, land use, labor and public health again. And, and I see this county as one of the major things that this county is responsible for, and I think sometimes we lose that, is it is health, housing, human services. And that is where, one of the main reasons, I'll just be honest with you, why I ran for office, because I feel that that is a crisis facing us. And it's one of those things that's going to take all hands on deck. I'm the first to say I don't know it all and that I know people that have a lot of answers. I've talked to her and it has, it's been a big help in helping direct where we're going. So I mean, I, and I continue to come back to Christine for those reasons. I just want you to know that. So I want to give Martha another chance to kind of say something.
Well, I think we're going to have, we're going to have to compromise because I don't, because this is going to be a tough decision. So Ben, what I'm hearing from you is that you would be willing to compromise with?
Jeff.
With Jeff?
Yes.
Commissioner Savis, might you be willing to compromise with Jeff? I, I just, I'm just curious to see where we are.
Yeah. Well, Ben said, Ben said it correctly, you know, Jeff did a stellar job on his interview. Jeff has done a number of things, watching, following, being attendance at a whole lot of meetings. And so, you know, I know he's on, whether it's housing or it's transit or it's transportation, I mean, we talk historically for years, right? I mean, something comes up, you know, we'll be on the phone chatting because he'll sit in on a metro meeting or he'll sit in on a J-PAC meeting, whatever it may be. So, you know, we've, you know, he's, he's committed to that. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to discount that whatsoever. But, you know, my, you know, apparently it's not clear for, I'm going to make it very clear, I really think again that the geography piece, and especially last Tuesday hammering at home, is big for me. And so my number, my number one pick at this point, to make it really clear, would be, you know, Mayor Helm followed by Mayor Ellis. But again, I'm thinking east of the river, I'm putting my priorities there. If I put away geography and I just discount that entirely, you know, it's, it's hard not to, it's hard not to recognize the great interview that, that Jeff answered. And again, all the, all the while, I, I don't want to dismiss Counselor Lewis's value that she brings as a metro counselor. And to me, that vacancy is concerning, so I am trying to put everything aside and think about the stability and all the relationships we need. This is a relationship business. And having her there and having that relationship, a strong one, has, has done Clackamas well. And I just don't know who the replacement would be. No, no one knows. All I know is the metro council is going to, would, would pick, if, if we picked Counselor Lewis here today, the metro council would pick their replacement. That concerns me a little bit, not that the metro council picks it, but we just don't know who it is or both. So I, I would, again, we've had a history probably of more Lake Oswego city counselors on this, on this board than any other city.
Yeah, on this board.
So I'll just put that out there.
Now remember though, I'm an interloper in Lake Oswego. Okay. I was in Gambi for 30, 30 years. I represented that, that area. And again, I appreciate what you said about Christine. I, I don't want to, she's got to stay there for us to the end of this because nobody's, nobody, we've never had a counselor that's stuck up nobody, we've never had a counselor that stuck up for us like, like she has. Because what, what she brought up today, which really struck home with me, was the fact that she pushed back on her colleagues to make sure we could get that money out to the rural areas in a fair way. And I, I, I do see her as eventually either being on the, on this commission, to be honest, in the future, you know, but I just would like to have her be more of an advocate for us at this time. I also have a great deal of respect for Diana Helm, and I understand the geography, because I've worked with Diana on a number of issues. She, she's a friend. I, I like the fact that Diana is so straightforward and direct. And so is there a compromise, Ben? Where, Craig, it doesn't sound, it's like you're going to stay firm with that. So Ben, is there a compromise?
If it's my turn on?
Yeah, I want to.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. What I'm hearing, and I can only imagine for Christine how irritating it must be, is like, no, that's not the job I'm applying for, and I have every right to apply for an open job as a Clackamas County resident for the job I want. I see, I, I feel you on that. I think what this board is saying, which may not be fair, is a lot of Clackamas County for many years has felt like Metro's a threat and not an ally. And we're told we're part of the region, but we haven't felt that way, and who knows when. And you did your job by making us sometimes feel like we are even in the room. That's just the reality. Now, I'm not saying you don't have every right to do this, I'm, that, you, you did, and you did well. But it does sound like it, it's kind of paring down by natural conversation. I, I can't, I can't deny this, like, and maybe this is not totally how I saw this playing out today. Jeff, you show the, I won't cuss, you show up. You show up even without a title. You're in the room, and you're knowledgeable, and you do your homework, and your background is immense, especially in one of the biggest issues facing the entire state, its economics, economic vitality, fiscal responsibility, being the treasurer, not in, not in title, but in heart for this county. Economics are people's lives. Small businesses is lives. It's not just some amorphous dollar figure, profit versus, you know, balance sheet. We're talking about, like, we have talked about the backbone and the bloodline of the county. And I am always, and you guys all do this, but in a way that's been understated and powerful, you showed up. And it was so like a light bulb went off in your interview today, and I didn't even agree with all your answers. I didn't, I was like, hmm, I don't know if I like that. But, and we'll talk about it. But, but you showed, but you showed up. And so based on how this is kind of paring down, I've now, I have my top three, and I see where this is going. I'm going to, I'm going to shift Diana Helm and still Jeff. I think that's a unique conversation to have. Clearly, geographics and unincorporated east county is important. Clearly, Jeff just hit him, hit the ball out of the park in his work and showing up. I am now down to two, since we can move forward. I'm going to do the same to you, Commissioner Schrader. Yeah. I'm between Jeff and Diana Helm. Yeah, to Goodman now. And I don't know if we need to keep deliberating, or if somebody just wants to make a motion and see what happens, but I, I don't know.
Commissioner Savis had another comment.
Yeah. I, I was thinking about the questions we asked here today, and I really appreciated actually the one that Chair Roberts threw out there. Like, if you had $5 million and it fell out of the sky, where would it go? And I had, I, I noted all those answers, and, you know, and each of them resonates with me, but I just want to say, going back to my geography aspect, I think both Mayor Helm, her response was basically health and how, human services, which is obviously a huge need. And I liked Mayor Ellis's response with taking that $5 million and buying land with it for, you know, low-income housing, that, that would knock $300,000 off the sale price of a home. I thought those were, those were brilliant answers, and all the other ones too. You know, just for the record, so everyone knows, Counselor Lewis said the sunrise, that, that appeals to me, I really like that. And Counselor Mann's comment was shelter, and, and Mr. Goodman's was also the sunrise. So I, I do want to say that, you know, those are all really good answers, but I, I just thought it'd be important for us to really know that at least geographically, you know, the two, those two folks both mentioned that low income, or that, that issue with housing or H3S or whatnot. So, so that's, that's where I, that's where I am. I, I could be bold to make a motion, but I, I'm hoping we get to four votes. I think it's really important, no matter what we do, to get to four votes. I'm kind of reading the tea leaves, but Chair, I'll, you know, if you want, I'm happy to, but if, if you still all want to deliberate, I'm not going to put a motion on the table until you're all ready.
So just to be clear, who are your, who's your top candidate?
My top candidate is Mayor Helm.
Okay. And Commissioner Schrader was going to say something.
I can, I, I will compromise on a motion, if necessary, in order for us to move forward with a decision.
Is your mic on, Martha?
I think so, I'm probably just not talking into it as usual. I, I really would like to stick with Jeff, but if we're not going to get there, I know Diana Helm would be an excellent, excellent choice for this commission, if that's the route we're going to take. I do think there is some significance to the geography there. I, I've known her for a very, very long time, and I do understand what you're saying, that that is an unrepresented area, and it is one of the issues we face as a county, because oftentimes our rural areas are kind of just brushed away, you know, and I, I, I see, I see my friend Diana as middle-of-the-road, sensible, willing to give people opportunities. I've watched her small business grow, and spent a lot of money there, actually, by the way, on more than one occasion. So is, is there a compromise? Is there, if there is a motion at this point? And again, I'm looking at Commissioner West, is that? Would, could we, could we?
For the, yeah.
I mean, really, I mean, again, I, but again, what I like best about Jeff is his, his economic, but unless we have one commissioner kind of compromise, and it doesn't look like the chair's kind of set, and Paul, you're kind of set. So, so who's the monkey in the middle? Would that be me? Yes, yes, look glorious, that's what I love about this job, you know? My heartburn's going to come back after this.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we've got different people, we might, if we moved ahead with a motion of some kind, then, you know, at least we would, we, we can spend hours at this. And aren't you leaving at 1:00, Ben? Is that the deal?
I, I have a little bit of time, we're okay on time.
We're okay on time, okay.
I am leaving, but you're okay. This is important.
Yeah, I guess, I want to turn it over to you second, Ben, but I might just make a comment too, and, and some of this I've kind of mentioned, but I think it is important to kind of recognize that, that Christine won her reelection in her seat by over 70%. I mean, so while there may be some people upset with Metro, I can tell you that the people in Clackamas County definitely support her. I mean, that's, that's her tremendous turnout. I, I think the other thing that impressed me is what she does with our youth. And she is in charge of a huge task of the debate club, and does a lot with our youth. And that's another thing, I think, just is, on a whole side note, and is, is also important to me in the community, is, you know, what have you done besides your regular job? And I, I understand what Paul's kind of saying geographically, that wanting to get some representation from different areas of the county, and maybe that's something this board should look at in the future. I'm not opposed to that, but I kind of look at the totality, I mean, Mr. Goodman did, he did do an amazing job on his interview, has a tremendous background in finance, and definitely brings that to the table. So, so again, when I try and look at the totality of everything in here, they're amazing candidates. And so it's kind down to really looking the strengths and weaknesses of each, and that's, that's really kind of where, why I've landed where I'm at. And, and so Commissioner West, I know, it appeared Martha was trying to ask you a question.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's going to have to call the vote. I mean, I'm just sitting here flipping through your, your five resumes. Oof, they're all really, really great. And, and I'm, it, it sounds, I mean, I haven't really, I, someone make a motion, we'll see what happens, but I, I still think the consensus seems to be lending itself to Mayor Helm and Jeff Goodman. And the county for the last three months, and the whole entire state, because of why we're here, has been through a lot, a lot. And that's why we're here. And so I'm excited that this will begin a new chapter in the county, to be stabilized, and move away from the situation that we're in, that I all know that we regret happened. I don't have a lot more to, a lot more to add, but I, I don't know. Do you guys want me to call the vote? I mean, are we, are we ready? I will call the vote if, if we're ready. Unless, yeah, Commissioner Savis, please.
Yeah, so I, there's one question that we didn't ask, and I don't know, I'm, I'm looking at Gary, because I don't want to procedurally, process-wise, throw anything off a kill, but there's one question we didn't ask. Are all five of the candidates willing, if they do get appointed, any one of the, any one of the five here today, if you do get appointed, are, are they going to run for reelection? And that's something we didn't get really out. So if we are that in-between, or uncertain, or trying to, you know, get to a solid candidate, so is it okay for me to ask, Gary, you know, please raise your hand if you're not intending to run if you get appointed today? Would that, just to show a hand, because all five candidates are in the room, would that be appropriate? Or could we ask any candidate who's not going to run to please come up and, and state so at the, at the, at the table?
You, if you all agree, you could ask the candidate, I would say, have them come to the microphone here at the table and answer yes or no. But yes, you can ask all the candidates any question you wish, they're still here, you're still deliberating.
Yes, no, or maybe.
Whatever you want to ask.
So Chair, could, could we just ask any, any of the five candidates who are not interested, if they, if they get appointed, will they, or will they, if they're not going to run, if they get appointed today, please step forward? Is that a fair question?
I would suggest you bring, first, bring them all forward so they're on the camera, and then whether they raise their hand or something, or speak.
So if I understand your question correctly, you want to hear from only the candidates who are going to run, or going to, if we appoint them, will not run for office?
Well, I think Gary had a better suggestion, maybe, is ask each of the five to come up one at a time, and say, I will, if I get appointed today, I will run, or I will not run, whatever their answer is, but maybe that's the fairest way to do it.
Candidates, would you please come forward? All of you can just come forward, and then sit down two at a time, and just please answer the question. If you're appointed, would you plan on running for this seat for election or not? I hope you've all thought of that. Please just, anyone at random, come forward, you all get a chance.
And before you ask, Commissioner West has a question.
I think it's the, it's super important, this is unexpected too, this is just, here we go, let's go Clackamas. We, it's important to know by the public, this seat is up again in '26, it will have to be run again in its normal cycle in '28, because the seat was vacated with more than two years on it, the next election cycle for 2026, which means your primary isn't next May, people will begin to start to file for the seat in the very early fall, and then you're on the May ballot, right, coming up within a year from now. And then if you don't come out of the primary, you're also on the November ballot. This seat is at-large countywide. So I think it's important just so people know what that timeline is, and then you'll be back on the ballot again in '28.
I'm not sure that's entirely accurate, but there will be an election in 2026, that is accurate. All right, so the question is, if you're appointed, do you plan on running for election in 2026, yes or no?
I don't know.
Okay, that's fine too.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I will be on the ballot in '26, which role it's for, to be determined.
I would not run for a seat in 2026.
I anticipated the question and answered it in my application to you. It is your decision as to whether or not your criteria is to have us run again or not. I can be of service if I only serve the next year and a half. I can be of service if I run again. I know I was a better counselor in my second term than I was in my first term, and that's the premise I operate from.
Well, that's interesting, I, I did not expect those responses, so frankly.
So discussion?
I mean, it doesn't really, I think, change my, I think it's super, like, it's great to know, and thank you for such a brief answer on a big topic. I, I'm ready to make a motion and call the vote.
Okay.
And we'll see how this lands.
Go ahead with your motion.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. Based on where the consensus was coming down, I move that we appoint Mayor, our Mayor Diana Helm to the commission position four. Hold on. Yeah, that's my motion.
So, so in the spirit of compromise, I will second that motion.
Okay, Commissioner West has made the motion to appoint Mayor Helm, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion?
Yeah, I guess, I made the motion. You know, it's amazing how you can plan so much for a moment like this, and then it completely goes, completely different than how you planned, and there was a lot of preparation for this. You know, I don't think, we're in the good fortune of we're not going to get it wrong with any five of you, flat out, and I definitely feel some compromise on my end, significant compromise. I don't think a lot of people are necessarily going to, you know, we get to these points, and there's, you know, different feelings, different ways, but where the consensus was landing, I wanted to move the county forward, and I said from the very beginning, my heart and goal was to stabilize us after these unfortunate events that brought us here. I think we've done that today, we've done our job, and we need a fifth colleague to help us govern. And instead of forever deliberating, that's why we're here today, and thank you to all that came and applied and put yourselves forward, even the previous applicants that didn't make top five, it was a stellar crop of people that stepped up to serve, so thank you.
All right. With that being said, Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye, no.
Motion passes 3-1, Mr. Chair.
All right. The motion passes, congratulations to your appointment, Diane Helm, position number four. Thank you very much. So we'd like to give you the opportunity to come forward, Diane Helm, if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, that didn't go how I thought it was going to go either, see, so Jeff, Jeff, all right, I'll just say, I have test anxiety, so I'm not, I'm a processor, I'm not good on the spot with questions. I'll think of the great answer to all your questions in the morning at like 2:00 AM. So, but, you know, sitting up there on the dais, you, you guys deliberate, you converse, you talk, you think, that's, that's what I'm better at. The spot-on stuff is not my, it's not my forte. But I will say, I'm very honored that you guys deliberated over this, and I know it's, it's tough, it's, you guys make really tough decisions all day long, and I appreciate that. And Commissioner Savis, I am always representing the underdog, because I come from an underdog position in my life, so that is, that is where my heart has always been. But I also, it, there's a lot of county to represent here, so I just But I also, it, there's a lot of county to represent here, so I just, I will, I want to do my best. I want to make you proud. I want to work with everyone and be on your team and, and move forward, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you very much.
Well, we sure welcome you aboard. And Commissioner Savas has turned his light on.
Yeah, but, yeah, after, after Mrs. Helm has finished with your comments, are you finished with your comments?
I'm finished.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to respond to, a little bit to, you know, the process, and also as, as Commissioner West kind of outlined about how we thought it would go. And, you know, seeing all the advocacy coming in through email campaigns, I, I really didn't know how it was going to go, right? And I always told everyone, well, I've got an open mind, I don't know how it's going to go, you know, I'll see by the interviews. The interviews are, mean a lot, and they, and they have meant a lot, and I've learned a lot here today. But, you know, I, I do want to just say thank you for, all of you for deliberating in a very, you know, transparent process. I think that was of value, and I thought it was most important, just to do what we just did, and that's deliberate. So, so thank you for your transparency.
Great. Thank you. And Commissioner Schrader would like to make a comment there.
I'm delighted to work with you, truly, in so many ways. And I'm going to be in deep kimchi over this, by the way, because I was getting lobbied pretty hard by people, but I don't let that influence my vote at all, because I, I do think you're going to be a stellar addition to this body, and it's going to be a total honor to work with you, both as a commissioner and a friend. And I'm willing, I'm willing to, you know, die on my sword, as I've done it many times. I'll be getting a lot of phone calls tonight, because there's a lot of politics at play. This is the way things go here, but I'm glad that, from my perspective, yeah, I'm just going to rise above that, and you're going to be an extremely talented, fun addition to us. And I'm, I'm really, really glad we could, we could come to this consensus together, because that's going to be important.
And I'm sorry you had to, to compromise so significantly, Commissioner West. I caught that word. I caught that word.
Well, I was waiting to hear that from him, too. I was like, okay, come on, we've got, if we're going to compromise.
Commissioner West, do you want to give you a chance?
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry. No, I didn't want to cut you.
It couldn't have been too much, because you were my original top three.
Okay, I'll take that.
All of this was significant.
Right, I agree.
Yeah. Congratulations. Let's get to work. I think we're all going to get a lot of phone calls. The benefit for me is I'm going to be on a plane, so I could take a breath.
I'm, I'm home, I'm already getting the disappointment texts, but not because of you, just because, you know, it's the way it goes in this county, you know? You got to make a call.
What I appreciate about this, with the, how this decision happened, is it was really county before politics. And there was a, a full court press, to a point to where it was almost like a machine. And at the end of the day, we are tasked with the ethical and moral responsibility to do what's right by every citizen we represent, not just the ones with the loudest microphone. And that's not an indictment on any candidate specifically. I know a lot of people have a lot of passion and feelings around this. But I, but I do feel like the county is going to be fantastically served with you as a colleague, and I appreciate our conversations and our ability to kind of process different policy issues and your thoughtfulness. And so, here we go. And I look forward to sitting on this dais with you, hopefully, very, very soon. I don't know what that process looks like, but we're going into budget week soon, so, yeah. And with that, I will, I will yield back, but congratulations, I'm super excited.
Yeah. Let me just say, I've been on the receiving end of those phone calls a lot, and have made a lot of unpopular decisions, again, in the best interest of the citizens and not the people who are trying to steer me. So, I get that.
Well, you've got to be that, you've got to be that way. And as I said, you're so talented, and you got up to this position, and it's just going to be a delight to work with you, so.
So, I would just like to say, one of the things that I, is very exciting to hear you come forward, is really a leader for small business. And Gary and I have had conversations about ways to promote small business, and how we can take it to the next level. So, I'm excited to have you up here to help us work on that. And really, I think you said a very key message, which resonated with me, is sometimes the people in Salem maybe never had a business. And I think that we all need to be cognitive of whatever we do here, if it negatively impacts our business community, we just really have to move forward cautiously. And I think having you here to help us, making, remind us that constantly, you clearly have been successful at that. So, with that, I want to congratulate you. And I, last thing, I will go ahead and turn it over to Gary. Did we have anything else, sir?
Yes, so I will work with Commissioner Helm on, there's a lot of paperwork for us to do, and also, when you'll be able to start, we have to have a swearing-in date for you. There's a lot that needs to occur before she can start, and of course, your availability. So, I'll talk with you as soon as this meeting ends.
Again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored.
All right. So, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for joining us today. If there is no further discussion, we will be adjourned. Thank you.